A. Bear, the Hearing Officer for this meeting. I would just ask if there are any changes, any additions or deletions to today's agenda?
Hearing Officer, there are no changes to the agenda.
There are five matters to be heard on today's hearing, and the first case will be twenty-five, excuse me. All right. The first case will be case number twenty-five fifty sixty, Michael Ray Martin and Belen Schwartz, variance. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer A. Bear, Marie Martinez, Building and Development Review Specialist, case twenty-five dash five zero six zero variance. Michael Ray Martin and Belen Schwartz applicants, Abby Guidry, Gloria Geoscience Consultant Agent, is requesting a variance of chapter ten point four point two point four to allow a proposed accessory dwelling to utilize its own liquid waste disposal system. The property lies within the rural residential zoning district. The property is located at one twenty-eight Cloudstone Drive, within Township sixteen north, range ten east, section five, SDA two, Commission District four. Summary. The applicants purchased the property in nineteen eighty-eight with a principal residence and an accessory structure on it, here now known as the ATF accessory dwelling unit, ADU. The applicants added an additional enclosure to the garage area approximately twenty years ago while renovating the property, but the addition has not been used as a housing unit at any point. The four-bedroom house at one twenty-eight Cloudstone Drive is already served by an onsite liquid waste system, but connecting the ATF ADU liquid waste stream to this system would have been infeasible due to the geological and topographic conditions of the property. The principal residence and the ATF ADU currently have their own septic tanks at Leachfield. The applicants received approval from the New Mexico Environment Department for a second onsite liquid waste system for the ATF ADU on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. After inspection by NMED, they were granted a permit to operate on September sixth, twenty twenty-four, and were issued permit LW dash zero 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 five four seven nine. Therefore, the applicants are requesting a variance to chapter ten, section ten point four point two point four of the SLDC to operate a second liquid waste system on the property to serve the ADU. The applicants has addressed the variance criteria as outlined in this memo. Building and Development Services has reviewed this request for compliance with pertinent SLDC requirements and has found that the facts presented support the request for a variance. Recommendation. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the request for a variance to allow a separate septic system to the ADU due to terrain constraints subject to the conditions. If the Hearing Officer finds the variance criteria has met the recommended approval of the variance, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Hearing Officer A. Bear, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, please.
This report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Staff requests the Hearing Officer memorializes findings of fact and conclusion of law in a written recommended order. The Santa Fe Planning Commission may be holding a public hearing on this matter on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, and at this time, I stand for any questions.
Ms. Martinez, thank you. I have a question regarding this statement that's on exhibit A. It's on the first page, last paragraph of exhibit A.
Okay, go ahead, and what question is that, Hearing Officer A. Bear?
In the middle of that last paragraph on page one, it states that the applicants are proposing to change the accessory structure garage to an ADU and request a variance for the setback requirements from the northern boundary of the property, table seven A. That was the only reference I saw to any setback variance.
Okay.
Hearing Officer A. Bear, so initially, when the application came forward through our technical advisory committee meeting, we established that the applicant would need two variances. One would be the AD requirements and the other one being the setback of the structure. But per staff's recommendation, and after reviewing it, we decided that the setback variance is not needed, as that was being referenced as a portion of code that is used for, was used for something else. So we're only here for the requirements of an ADU.
I see, thank you. So it is staff's position that there are conditions of the property itself as far as geological or geographic conditions and topographic conditions that would make it very difficult, if not impossible, to have
Yes.
the central system connected, is that?
Yes, we went out to do a site visit, Hearing Officer A. Bear, and at that time, the terrain constraints due to rock outcroppings was not going to make it feasible for them to put in, or to be able to connect the septic or the same septic unit.
Okay, thank you. Are there, has staff received any comments on this particular application?
Hearing Officer A. Bear, no, there has been no opposition.
No opposition, okay, thank you very much. Does the applicant want to make any comment on this presentation?
No, they do not.
All right, thank you. I believe the next case on the agenda is case twenty-five.
Hearing Officer A. Bear, you might want to see if there's anyone in the public that has any comments on this, and I'll check the team's link as well to see if there's anyone who has any comments.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the room that wants to make comment on this case we just heard? Case regarding the accessory dwelling unit? No comments. Is there anyone online?
Hearing Officer A. Bear, we do not have anyone online that wishes to speak on this behalf, on this case.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. The next case is case twenty-five fifty ten, which is a request for a density variance, Javier Juarez. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Hearing Officer A. Bear, Marie Martinez, Building and Development Review Specialist, case twenty-five dash five zero one zero, variance. Issue. Javier Juarez applicant, Lisa Martinez agent, requests a variance of density to divide eight point nine five four acres into seven lots, each containing one point two five acres plus or minus. The applicant also requests a second variance of the existing two hundred and fifty-foot setback from New Mexico five ninety-nine right-of-way. A third variance of open space. The property is zoned residential estates within the Tres Arroyos de Ponete Community District overlay, which allows one dwelling per two point five acres. The property is located at three North Horizon Lane, Township sixteen north, range eight east, section one, Commission District two. Summary. The applicant requests a variance of density to allow the division of a eight point nine five four acre parcel into seven one point two five acre lots for a family transfer. Chapter nine, table nine dash eleven dash two, dimensional standards, TAP-dash RES residential states illustrates they allow density at one dwelling unit per two point five acres for the zoning district. The applicant further requests a variance of chapter nine point eleven point two point one of the two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirements of the Tres Arroyos de Ponete Community District overlay to eliminate the required two hundred and fifty-foot setback. Setbacks are to be regulated per chapter seven point three, table seven dash A of the SLDC. Furthermore, the applicants request a variance of chapter nine point eleven point two point two point three, restricting the utilization of the perimeter of the property as open space. The applicant proposes to utilize the regulated setbacks per chapter seven point three to meet the required open space. The applicant has addressed the variance criteria as outlined in this memo. Recommendation. Staff recommendation is for denial of the request for variance of density, the two hundred and fifty-foot setback requirements and open space requirements. If the Hearing Officer finds the variance criteria has met the recommended approval of the variance, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Hearing Officer A. Bear, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Staff requests a Hearing Officer memorializes findings of fact and conclusion of law in a written recommended order. Santa Fe County Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing on this matter on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you, and at this time, I stand for any questions.
Ms. Martinez, as I understand it, this eight point, I don't remember, almost nine acres was created after or at the time that the Highway five ninety-nine was put in, and the zoning at the moment is one dwelling per two point five acres. So this particular eight point nine by four acres could be three lots without any variance, is that correct?
That is correct, Hearing Officer A. Bear.
And there was an indication in some of the applicant's exhibits that eleven lots were created after twenty sixteen that were not two point five acres, that they were smaller than two point five acres. Do you have any knowledge of how that was possible, or if that is the case?
Hearing Officer A. Bear, in the past, we had provisions that allowed for small lot family transfers of one and a quarter acre, so you were able to go from two and a half acre minimum to half the minimum density requirements. Many of these lots were created prior to the two thousand sixteen dash nine ordinance, and therefore allowed, and the regulations changed since, and the minimum requirement's two and a half acres per dwelling.
And as I understand it, the family lot transfer is no longer permissible, is that correct?
Hearing Officer A. Bear, they are permissible, there are just no small lot family transfers. So where you're able to cut that to one half the size of the minimum density.
All right. So in this case, it would require a variance to go below the two point five acres?
Hearing Officer A. Bear, that is correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Hearing Officer A. Bear.
Is the applicant going to speak on behalf of this application?
Lisa Martinez's agent.
Thank you.
She would like to provide some exhibits?
Fine, thank you. Do you have copies for the court reporter as well? Thank you.
Yes. Yes. My name is Lisa Martinez, and my address is thirty-two oh one C, Zaffarano Drive, number one eleven, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five oh seven. Thank you.
And before you begin, Ms. Martinez, we'll mark your handout as hearing exhibit one.
Thank you.
Right. Proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Hearing Officer, and members of the Building and Development Services Growth Management Department. My name is Lisa Martinez, and I am presenting our case today on behalf of Mr. Javier Juarez, who is the current property owner, and also on behalf of Mr. Gerald and Mrs. Nora Solano, who are currently under contract to purchase this eight point nine five acre property, which is located at number three, North Horizon Lane. As has been described, the property is within the Tres Arroyos del Poniente Community District overlay, and it's zoned as residential estate. On behalf of the applicant, I'm requesting the following three variances, which are associated with density, setback, and open space. To give you a little bit of project background, going back to September of twenty twenty-two, Mr. Javier Juarez and his surveyor presented to the Technical Advisory Committee a request for a division of land, a variance of density, and also a variance of setback requirements. Mr. Juarez and his surveyor met with the Land Use Department and other county departments, such as Water and Wastewater, and also the State of New Mexico Engineers Department for a well permit. Ultimately, an application for ready, willing, and able water and/or wastewater services was provided to the county in June of twenty twenty-two, and it was approved on July seventh of that year. We understand that that approval has since expired. However, a new application letter was submitted for reapproval. On February fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, we received a letter stating that the Santa Fe County Utilities Department is ready to provide the proposed development with the services requested. They will grant water access to a twelve-inch water line, which is at Vista Sewell, which is six hundred and twenty feet from the development location. In addition, from the same location, there's also a twelve-inch wastewater line that will be made available for a wastewater connection. In addition to addressing the ready, willing, and able process for water and wastewater services and to restart the process for the current proposed subdivision, an additional presentation was made to the TAC on September fifth of twenty twenty-four. So in your packet are the documents that we presented at that TAC meeting, as well as a follow-up letter that was created on September twenty-third by Marie Martinez from the Santa Fe County Development Department. It summarized the TAC discussion. In addition, on December second of twenty twenty-four, a neighborhood meeting was conducted. Your packet should also include the documents that were presented at that meeting, a list of attendees, and notes on the general discussion, which included questions about whether mobile homes were to be installed, the Santa Fe County approval process for subdivision, county water and wastewater availability, and proposed subdivision lot size, which, as you've heard, is one point two five acres. So with regard to our first variance regarding density, we're requesting a variance of the SLDC table eight dash ten to allow seven lots consisting of approximately one point two five acres to be created on the eight point nine five acre lot. The applicant's desire is to create these lots for the purpose of a family transfer subdivision. This request for this lot size is not unusual, as many one point two five family transfer lots have been created within this area in the past, and you had a little bit of discussion about that a little while ago. In your packet is a listing of some of these one point two five acre lots, there are approximately thirty-eight, and there were actually some small lots that were also deeded after twenty sixteen. were also deeded after twenty sixteen, which are designated as yellow on the attached map. So in terms of the variance criteria and where the request is not contrary to the public interest, the proposed density variance is not considered contrary based on the following. This request was presented to the general public in the form of a neighborhood meeting as required by the S L D C and there was no one in attendance that spoke in opposition of the subdivision. The applicant is willing to comply with any and all requirements to create the subdivision. The infrastructure, roads, sewer, water lines will be constructed in accordance with code requirements. In terms of extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions of the property, we know that the parcel was created by the construction of New Mexico five ninety-nine. In twenty sixteen, the S L D C was adopted, at which time the small lot family transfer was eliminated from the code. The applicant wishes to create these lots for the purpose of a small lot family transfer subdivision. Prior to twenty sixteen, one point two five acre small lots were created through Santa Fe County and the creation of, of these small lots through the proposed subdivision will serve as, serve as a form of affordable housing by the applicant's family. Strict compliance with the density requirement for this property would create an undue hardship on the applicant and the family requesting the subdivision. In order to meet the spirit of the S L D C, the S L D C, as is stated, is designed to protect and promote the health, safety and general welfare of the present and future residents of the county. The granting of the requested density variance meets the purpose and intent of the S L D C, as the smaller lots will provide affordable housing to family members, therefore meeting the spirit of the S L D C. In terms of variance number two regarding setback, the second variance is a request of section nine point eleven, point two, point one, which states there should be a two hundred and fifty foot setback from New Mexico five ninety-nine highway right-of-way. And so the applicant is requesting to eliminate this two hundred and fifty foot setback. The current property configuration was created by the condemnation for the construction of New Mexico five ninety-nine prior to the T A P C D and the S L D C being adopted. The setback is significant and it would take close to fifty percent of the property, limiting any potential subdivision that would be proposed. We know that this two hundred and fifty foot setback comes from the edge of the pavement of New Mexico five ninety-nine on this site. And so the distance to New Mexico five ninety-nine to the property line is approximately eighteen feet, which leaves an approximate two hundred and thirty-two, two hundred and thirty-two foot setback on the eight point nine five acre site. So the applicant again is requesting a variance to eliminate that two hundred and fifty foot setback. In terms of the variance criteria, where the request is not contrary to the public interest, we believe it's not contrary to this interest due to the fact that there are many structures along New Mexico five ninety-nine within the T A P C D that do not meet the two hundred and fifty foot setback. Some of these structures are now within the Santa Fe city limits or were incorporated into the Village of Awopria Community District Overlay. In terms of exceptional situations or conditions of the property, strict enforcement of the S L D C section nine point eleven, point two, point one will reduce the potential for development on the parcel. And there's no practical reason to impose a setback on this parcel of land as there are other properties alongside the New Mexico five ninety-nine corridor that are within the setback and are very visible from New Mexico five ninety-nine. In order to meet the spirit of the S L D C, we know that the S L D C is designed to protect and promote the health, safety and welfare of present and future residents of the county. So the granting of this requested setback variance will allow family members to live within and contribute to Santa Fe County, therefore meeting the spirit of the S L D C. The land taken by the enforcement of the setback requirement does not benefit the county in any way. Section nine point eleven of the S L D C has open space, trail and landscape requirements for a subdivision and table seven A requires setbacks for each lot, which allows for sufficient buffering of the subdivision from New Mexico five ninety-nine. It's also important to note that in March twenty twenty, another case came before the county hearing officer and planning commission with a similar request for variance from the requirements of chapter nine and the Tres Arroyos del Puniente Community District Overlay regarding the two hundred and fifty foot setback. Existing property topography and drainage were the focus of that request. And ultimately, the hearing officer and planning commission approved the request, citing in part as one of the conclusions of law, that the request was not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the S L D C was observed and that the setback is consistent with the setback of existing structures on neighborhood, neighboring properties. And that's the, the supplemental document that I provided to you a few minutes ago. In terms of variance number three for open space, third variance is a request in the variance language stated in T A P C D section nine point eleven, point two, point two, point three, which does not allow open space within perimeter setbacks. It states that perimeter setbacks on properties may not be used as open space unless the area meets a standard above or a buffer is needed for adjacent properties. The applicant isn't proposing to eliminate the open space requirement, but rather is proposing to utilize the required R E setback to meet the required thirty percent open space. The R E setback required by the S L D C is ten feet from the front of the property, twenty-five feet from the sides and rear property lines. These are the setbacks that we are proposing and are shown on the proposed development survey. In terms of the variance criteria, in terms of contrary to the public interest, the request to allow the required R E setbacks to be utilized to comply with a thirty percent open space requirement is not contrary to the public interest in our opinion. The subdivision will be developed in accordance with the S L D C and T A P C D requirements and the granting of this variance would allow the development to meet the open space requirements in a manner that's suitable to this property. In terms of extraordinary or exceptional situations, the T A P C D requirements for the subdivision do not differentiate a seven lot subdivision from a seventy lot subdivision. And so these requirements place an undue burden on smaller subdivisions, such as what we're proposing in terms of this seven lot proposal. In terms of observing the spirit of the S L D C, as I've stated, the applicant does not propose to eliminate the open space requirement, but rather proposes to utilize the required R E setbacks to meet the thirty percent open space requirements. We believe the spirit of the S L D C is to create open space to allow for more aesthetic view of the housing developments. In closing and in summary, the applicant is asking for relief from the dimensional standards set forth in the S L D C section nine point eleven, T A P C D setback from the New Mexico five ninety-nine and S L D C table eight dash ten, R E density requirements and language within the S L D C section nine point eleven, which prohibits open space within perimeter setbacks. The requested zoning density variance and setback variance would serve the purpose of maximizing the utility of a portion of land that as an express condition of the plat's approval would result in exceptional practical difficulties for the future owner, Mr. Gerald Solano. In order for Mr. Solano to provide each of his children and family members with a relatively equal inheritance that will serve as a form of affordable housing for the applicant's family, Mr. Solano would need the land associated with the current two hundred and fifty foot setback from the frontage road. We know that affordable housing is a critical issue across the county and equally as important are the benefits to be gained by having family close together. Mr. Solano and some of his family members will speak today to present to those benefits of the proposed subdivision for his family and how this will provide a stable and secure environment, along with an independent home site to care for a family member. It will further address the aging in place concept and the importance of being able to have family community nearby for important support and care. The applicant maintains that the requested variances will not have adverse effects on the general health, safety and welfare of the property owners and area residents. And as a final statement, I'd like to say that should, should you as the hearing officer recommend to the planning commission approval, with all due respect, I would like to request that the proposed, the proposed condition of not allowing accessory dwelling units, we would ask that that be stricken and that accessory dwelling units would also be allowed on each of these parcels. Thank you in advance for your time, for your consideration. And with that, I would like to ask the family members to present about their proposed project and I would stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. You referred to the contract for the purchase of this property. Is that contract an executed contract? Or is, is it, is it conditional upon the approval of the, of the commission?
It's a, it's an executed contract. Ideally, ideally, it would be based on the approval of these variances. And so both parties, both the current property owner and the proposed property owner are aware that, you know, that we are working on this and we are hopeful that we will receive a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Is there someone else who wants to speak on behalf of the application?
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. and Mrs. Gerald Solano, the proposed property owners, to begin.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Excuse me, did you swear them in? Did I miss that?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I understand that I am under oath. And thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Gerald Solano and I'm here with my wife Nora Solano and my daughter Mariah Solano. I am a retired Santa Fe police lieutenant. My wife is a retired, retired from Public Employees Retirement Association. My daughter here is an employee of the state land office with the state of New Mexico. We are here today to speak on behalf of the many family members seated behind me today. We come here to ask for your assistance in helping us fulfill our dream. Our dream is to purchase the eight point nine five acres of land in the Tres Arroyos subdivision and subdivide the land into seven parcels that would become homes to my family to include our kids and grandkids. My family who sits behind me, we're all born, raised and have spent our entire lives living here in Santa Fe. Every single one of us has attended elementary, middle, elementary school, middle school, high school here in Santa Fe. We are public servants of our community. We are employees that help keep our government running. Our family is comprised of current and retired city, county and state employees. Together, we are employees of the state of New Mexico State Land Office, New Mexico Environment Department, P E R A, C Y F D, Presbyterian Medical Services, Santa Fe Public Schools and a current and a retired Santa Fe police officers. We serve our community in our employment and it is in our free time that we spend coaching our kids and youth, youth sports and a variety of sports activities. Our family's roots run deep here in Santa Fe and our goal is to keep our roots firmly implanted in Santa Fe for generations to come. As many of you know, homeownership in Santa Fe is getting increasingly difficult. The high cost of real estate in Santa Fe has pushed many locals out of neighboring, out to neighboring cities. Our children, our children are forced to move to Albuquerque, Rio Rancho and Burnaleal. In doing so, local Santa Feans are forced to commute, commute an additional two hours per day to keep their jobs here in Santa Fe. Many others are forced to leave their government jobs here in Santa Fe due to, due to the high cost of living. So not only are we losing our youth, but we are losing our employees. For my wife and I, more important are the, more important than the economic reasons to purchase this land is the human and personal reasons. Allowing these variances to go forward, allowing these variants to go through would allow our very close, loving family to stay together, look after one another and care for each other as we all get older. My daughter Mariah, who is thirty years old, was diagnosed with incurable rare cancer in twenty twenty-three. Despite her cancer diagnosis and ongoing treatments, she still works a full-time job for the state land office where she is a supervisor. Like many young adults, she values her independent living. Her doctors and treatment are here in Santa Fe. Having to move out of Santa Fe would not only add an extra two hours of commute to her day, but will greatly affect her immunotherapy treatments and doctor's appointments. My wife Nora and I are both retired government employees. She's, she's retired from the state employees retirement department and I am a retired Santa Fe police lieutenant. Our main priority is continue to take care of our kids and provide daycare for our grandbabies. Caring for our grandbabies as our kids pursue their careers would be impossible if they are forced to move out of Santa Fe. Our vision is that one day we'll live to the ripe old age that our children can care for us. Living closer to each other makes that much more sense for everyone. While I volunteered to speak on how these variants and land purchase will affect me and my children, the rest of the family behind me all have their own reasons, which are just as important. When we first found this property, it was a dream, it was a dream that if everything would fall into place and make this happen, to make this happen. Buying the property without knowing if these variances would go through would be a huge financial risk. Instead, we went under contract to purchase the property under the condition that the variants are passed and we are able to split the property to fit our family's needs. We have tried to do everything by the book to meet the county's requirements as well as showing we will be good neighbors to all the Tres Arroyos subdivision. It is important to note that in asking to allow these variances, we are not asking for any special privileges that have not already been granted to other landowners in the area over the years. We are only asking for fair and equitable treatment. That being said, we have already spent close to thirty thousand dollars on permits, plats, professional services and down payments to help meet the requirements needed to meet the Santa Fe County application process. We respectfully ask that you, that you help our dream come true by allowing these variances in front of you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solano. Did anyone else want to speak?
My name is Derek Solano. My current address is forty-nine seven O Peak. Good afternoon. My name is Derek Solano. I'm twenty-four years old and I'm a police officer with the city of Santa Fe. I just hit my fourth year of being a police officer. I was born and raised in the city and I've always felt proud to serve the community that raised me. My wife and I both grew up here and we both knew this is where we wanted to build our life together. We dreamed of finding a piece of land where we could build our home, something close to both of our families, where our children can grow up near their grandparents. With both of us working full-time, it's a blessing to know our kids will be cared for by people we love and trust. We've searched for property before, but finding something that fits our needs and budget has been a real challenge. Having our parents watch the kids while we're at work will save a significant amount of money on child expenses. This is where our roots are and we want our children to grow up with the same sense of community and belonging that we did. Staying in Santa Fe means everything to us. It's more than just where we live. It's our community, our home, it's where our families have grown, where our roots run deep and where we want to build our future. But lately, many of us are being forced to consider leaving, not because we want to, but because we can't find housing that fits our lives. We don't want to have to move to Rio Rancho or Albuquerque to afford a home with enough space or to find a property that matches our vision for our lives. If we move to Rio Rancho, I would have to add two hours of commute time to my already ten-hour workday, which would significantly impact my ability to respond to immediate emergency callouts. As a member of the emergency response team living within the city of Santa Fe, the community I serve allows for faster, more effective action, unlike many officers who must travel into town when emergencies arise. We don't often spend hours commuting back and forth from Rio Rancho to Santa Fe for work, or worse, working jobs far from the community we love simply because housing pushed us out. We're not asking for luxury, we're asking for the ability to live and work in the city we call home. Santa Fe should grow in a way that includes Santa Fe. Santa Fe should grow in a way that includes Santa Fe natives, not just those who can afford high-end developments. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Solano.
Good afternoon. My name is Savannah Solano. I am 25 years old, and I was born and raised here in Santa Fe. After graduating from Santa Fe High School, I attended New Mexico State University where I earned my master's degree in business administration. After meeting my now husband, I moved back home to Santa Fe and began working with the State Land Office for two years. I now work with the city of Santa Fe as an HR analyst, too. My husband and I got married in June of 2024, and we're now 26 weeks pregnant, expecting our first baby in August. It's an exciting and emotional time for us as we prepare to start our family. My husband and I both grew up here, and we're now working hard to build a future for our family in the same community that shaped us. Our dream is to purchase property near both of our parents, somewhere we can build a home and raise our kids surrounded by family. It means the world to us that our children will be cared for by their grandparents while we're at work, and we hope to give them a childhood full of love, space to play, and a deep connection to this community. We've looked at property before, but it's been very difficult to find something that's both affordable and truly feels like home. Our vision is to build a house where our kids and dogs can roam around freely, and where we can stay for the long term. If we are unable to find a property and have to move to Rio Rancho, it would likely require us to find and pay for childcare near there, adding a significant unplanned expense to our budget, especially since our longstanding plan has always been to rely on our parents to care for their grandchildren. We're committed to Santa Fe, not just because it's where we're from, but because it's where we want our children to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solano.
Sure. My name is Paul Sandoval. Address is 42 Cuerno de Vaca, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87507.
Who's this? Come on, think.
Hello, my name is Paul Sandoval, and this is my wife. My daughter's here with our grandchildren. I have lived in Santa Fe, Santa Fe for the last 60 years, and I work part of Santa Fe as the Service and Parts Director for the past 33 years, which is, is what's part of our business is to, for me, is to get involved with the community. I, we help sponsor local events like Big Brothers and Sisters, Music on the Plaza, Elizabeth Shelter, Pancakes on the Plaza. So I'm part of that committee that does all that, so we help the community. We spend an average of about $300,000 a year helping our community. I also have been a volunteer coach at Santa Fe High School and also at Capital High School for the past 20 years. My son and my stepson are involved in the local church and both help with the youth and young adults, so they're pointing to the community also. With all that said, I love Santa Fe, and so do, and so do my kids. I want them to grow up and to raise their kids here so we can all be close to each other. But as, as you all know, the cost of living in Santa Fe is very expensive, and most people can't afford to stay here. My son and his wife live in Rio Rancho right now and work in Santa Fe. They both have young kids and have to commute, and my daughter and her husband rent in Santa Fe because they can't afford a house. We are asking, we aren't asking for any special privileges, just that we be treated fairly like others that have been in this same neighborhood. So with, with your grace and understanding, hopefully we can be approved, we can prove the development of the property. My hope is that all my kids and my grandkids can live here, as this is a beautiful city, and that we can raise their kids, and that we can all pitch in and help us, help and serve this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Is there anyone else in the room that wants to speak on this application? Is there anyone who wants to speak against this application? Would you come forward?
Thank you for calling Dr. Bones V and T. How can I be?
Hi.
Yes, I swear. Uh, my name is Lily Sandoval. I live on 9 Ravenswood Lane, off of North Horizon. Anything else you want from me? I am also a native Santa Fean. I've been here for 71 years. My mother was from here, my family is from here. I've been in the North Horizon subdivision for 35 years. That area back to the, is to the back of the proposed subdivision that we're here today about. Are, my objection is that it should continue to follow the two and a half acre, like everybody else in the back, rather than this high density at the front. Concerned about how it would affect the traffic because the address is on North Horizon, whether there's access from the frontage road, or if it's all going to be off of, of Har, uh, North Horizon. As far as the, the three variants that they're talking about, the setback of the 250 feet, I also signed a petition, and other members in the subdivision that I'm in signed a petition, and I was hoping they were here, or maybe they presented it as well. Somebody else has it to present it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlotte Lindsay. I live at 10 L. Lane, Santa Fe, 87507. That is also off of North Horizon. We're the last street on that, off of North Horizon, where this is. I am also a Santa Fe, Lily and I are sisters. I am also a native, multi-generational native of Santa Fe. I've been there for, Santa Fe for 70 years, and my mother, and her mother, and her mother, and her mother. So we've been here a long time as well. I've lived, I was one of the first residents out in this subdivision. The subdivision that we are part of is called the Broad Horizon subdivision, is right behind the one that is proposed. We have had covenants that we've had to adhere to. We have had, were supposed to contribute to maintenance of the road. This has grown significantly. The population of this area has grown tremendously with no one contributing to help maintain the roads out there. If you drive on it right now, you have lakes or ponds due to all the rains, et cetera, and adding additional traffic out there would be a concern to our neighborhood. The, we have already difficulty with tra, with young people now riding, they think it's open space, and they run their four, four-wheelers all over the neighborhood. We've had near misses. We've had people taking stop signs down where they've been put in place so they can bypass those. It is a very large concern for the traffic, the safety of the homes out there, the safety of our children out there, and adding more population, I think, would just, at, at this level, would be detrimental to our area.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Are there any other comments on this application? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Yvette Sandoval. I live at 2360 Brother Abden Way. I'm coming, excuse me? I do. So earlier, you heard my daughter, my son-in-law, and my in-laws speak about how important it is for us as a family to stay together. I don't want to, they, they summarize that extremely well, and so what I want to say is that in our culture and growing up in Santa Fe, I'm a multi-generational Santa Fean. My grandparent, my grandfather lived just a couple of blocks down the street, and my entire family was able to live off West San Francisco in our family compound, and that really meant a lot of things to me. They are the great, that was the greatest blessing of my life. It allowed me really to be able to rely on grandparents when my parents had to work. I believe my grandchildren deserve the same. Additionally, it would allow us to make sure that the kids, while, while taken care of, also get the emotional support they need. So I'm just asking for your consideration of this request. I don't believe that the spirit of any of the variances would be changed, and we would ensure that the community still stayed very, you know, the houses would be built well. Very pleasing earlier, I heard something about mobile homes. This is not mobile homes. This would be nice homes that went up, and the community would be proud of the compound, the family compound that would be there. And I just ask for your consideration to allow us to continue to be in Santa Fe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandoval. Are there any other comments? Are there any comments online on this matter?
Hearing Officer Aber, there's no one online indicating that they wish to speak on this matter.
Thank you. With that, we will conclude this case, and I will prepare a recommended decision in 15 business days. And thank you all for attending. The next matter is Thomas Simic and Christina Maestas Simic, a conditional use permit, case number 255020.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer Aber. David Ruiz, Development Review Specialist Senior, Santa Fe County Land Use. Thomas Simic applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow to use of a retreat. The site is zone traditional community, and Appendix B use matrix illustrates that a retreat is a CUP within the traditional community zoning district. The 3.45 acre parcel is located at 7687 Old Santa Fe Trail within Section 22, Township 16 North, Range 10 East, Commission District 4, parcel ID 99304621. The applicant and his wife Christina Simic is requesting the use of a retreat for memorial celebrations of life, weddings, and transitional ceremonies celebrating the well-being following chronic illnesses, et cetera. This existing site consists of an existing resident, existing accessory dwelling unit, accessory structures, and outdoor kitchen. This object property is located at 7687 Old Santa Fe Trail within the vicinity of Cañada de Los Alamos and consists of 3.45 acres. The property is also within the traditional community zoning district of Santa Fe County. The applicant states, "It is our hope to explore the possibilities of utilizing our land as an outdoor small event gathering space for memorial, memorial celebrations of life, wedding ceremonies, transitional ceremonies, and ceremonies celebrating well-being following chronic illnesses. Gatherings are 20 or less. They will limit the gatherings to 50 attendees. It will be alcohol-free, and hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m." She reads, "I was born and raised in New Mexico and a proud native, New Mexican, specializes in end-of-life ministry work, ministering to the dying and to their families. The offerings take place during the death and dying process, as well as supporting families and communities following the death of a loved one, assisting families in celebrating life's greatest joys and deepest griefs through support and ceremony. For many years, Christina's work has taken place in various locations such as pri, private homes, funeral homes, event spaces, within the majority of ceremonies in outdoor settings." The applicants have addressed the conditional use permit criteria, and staff has responded and has continued on the memo, containing the memo, sorry. The applicable SLDC design standards are reviewed as follows. Access and easements, fire protection, landscape and buffering, fences and walls, lighting, signs, parking and loading, water supply and water conservation, liquid waste, protection of historic and archaeological sources, terrain management, solid waste, air quality and noise. It, the, following agencies, following agencies have reviewed this case. County Fire Marshal, approval. County Public Works, no response. County Utilities, no response. Chipo and the State, no response. Office of the State Engineers, approval, and New Mexico Environmental Department, approval. Building and, the, Building and Development Services staff has reviewed this project for compliance with the pertinent SLDC requirements, and has found that the presented support for requests for a conditional use permit to utilize their land for retreats, the use is compatible with the current development within the affected zone district. The use will not impact adjacent land uses, and the application satisfies the submitted requirements set forth in the SLDC, inclusive of the conditioned use criteria set forth in Chapter 4, Section 4.9.6.5. The review comments have not been received by the State Historic Preservation Office, and county staff have established findings that this application to utilize their land for retreats, SLDC Chapter 8, Appendix B, and required design standards set forth in the SLDC. Staff recommends approval of condition, conditional use permit to allow and utilize their land for retreats, subject to the following condition. Madam Hearing Officer, may I enter these conditions in the record?
Yes, please.
This report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record, record. Staff requests the Hearing Officer memorialize findings of fact and conclusion of law in a written recommended order. The Santa Fe County Planning Commission may be holding a public hearing on this matter on June 18, 2025. Thank you. At this time, I stand for questions.
Mr. Ruiz, I noticed on your Exhibit E, which was communications with the State Engineers Office, there seemed to be an issue on the adequacy of the well. Was, was that resolved? You indicated that the agencies had approved. It, it's Exhibit E. There's a shared well agreement that covers both tracks, and my understanding is the applicants own both tracks. But then the concern on page three, in, in the third from the bottom paragraph, it states, "The well is not currently permitted for the use as described in the well-share agreement." Before moving forward, our office strongly recommends the applicant contact the OSE Water Rights Division to ensure that the well is properly permitted for the use as described in the proposal. So is it your understanding that that concern has been resolved?
I believe there's another letter from the State Engineers Office approving the use.
Pardon me, were you concerned that you couldn't hear?
Yes.
The acoustics are terrible in here. Maybe if you wanted to move up to this first row, I don't know if that would help. And Mr. Ruiz, could you speak up just a little bit?
Yes. Okay. You say it was on page three?
The, the note of concern was on page three of Exhibit E. And you're saying that you believe that, that concern of the State Engineers Office has been resolved? Is that your understanding?
Yes, and that's why the use was approved under their review.
Mr. Ruiz, have you, this property is off of, it's accessed off of Old Santa Fe Trail, is that correct?
That's correct.
Did you make a site visit on that property?
I was not on the site visit, but John Lovato was on the site visit.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Lovato. Mr. Lovato, is, I guess what I'm concerned about here is the residential nature of this area. What is your perception of that area as far as it being any commercial activity?
Hearing Officer Aber, during my inspection, I observed that most, majority of the residents, there were single-family residences. There are some associated properties that have home occupations within the vicinity, a majority are residential.
Thank you. Mr. Ruiz, the reason I ask that question is... application, it appears that there will be potentially four gatherings of up to 50 people a month and it would generate possibly as many as 50 vehicles. And it seems to me that that is quite a bit of commercial activity for a residential area in the traditional community. Looking at that zoning, which I did have, here it is. Section 8.6.8, "The purpose of the traditional community district is to designate areas suitable for residential, small-scale commercial and traditional agricultural uses consisted with the existing development patterns of traditional communities." This doesn't seem to me to be small-scale commercial. If I were one of the neighboring properties, I would be, I think I'd be very concerned about the significance of up to 20 gatherings a year with as many as 50 attendees with four, four possibly a month, probably in the warmer months. Do you think that that comports with the nature of small commercial in a traditional community that's primarily residential?
So on the water supply and water conservation review that we did, it shows that purified drinking water will be made available in two to five gallon water dispensers. It will allow for minimum one gallon of water daily per attendee. We also have sealed water bottles and of drinking water available when requested. And there will be no preparation of food for the events. It will be all catered. Also, there will be no overnight stays available for the attendees. Portable toilets will be utilized when there are more than 20 attendees and the toilets and hand sanitizing stations will be provided by Santa Fe Waste Management. In Mexico, Liquid Waste Department calculated and approved water usage and design flow for the events. The water usage for the day of the events would be about 115 gallons per the owners, about 100 gallons of sanitary use for the guests, for 20 guests, a total of 215 gallons per event day and 20 attendees.
The amount of traffic, I guess, is one of the concerns. But in addition to that, you brought up the fact that the ADU on the property also will be used as a bed and breakfast, a short-term rental. That wouldn't necessarily be limited to just these gatherings. I mean, it could be in use almost all the time. So you basically would have two different kinds of commercial activities going on on this property. That's my concern, that I'm trying to justify how that fits into the traditional community of that area that is primarily just residential.
Hearing Officer Abir, this application was sent to Public Works for their analysis. We gave them 30 days to respond and we didn't receive any type of response from them. So per the ordinance, we had to move the application forward. Staff felt that the proposal of the four retreats a month with up to 50, the applicant had stated to us that they wouldn't be up to 50 for each one. There would be a number of them that would be smaller gatherings or that would be under 20, which would be served, you know, under the current well situation. The existing ADU, I do not think that that was going to be used for any part of the retreat. The applicants did state to us that there was going to be no overnight stays for the retreat.
I believe that I saw in the application material that there was the possibility that the family members would be using the ADU. But in any event, it wouldn't be limited to that. And once they have, they have the ADU, it could be, if they're a short-term rental, it could be used all the time, I believe.
It's possible. No indication or no application for a short-term rental has been brought to staff's attention or even an application for a short-term rental has been brought to staff.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Is the applicant here to speak on behalf of this?
Christina Simic, 7687 Old Santa Fe Trail as well. Hello. My name is Christina Maestas Simic. I am a proud native New Mexican who comes from deep roots of the Maestas', the Montaños, the Delgados and the Romeros. My ancestors' presence here dates back before New Mexico was founded. My background is indigenous, Hispanic and European. I come from the founding fathers and mothers of Santa Fe, Las Vegas and Rancho Cetahua area and have lived and worked in La Cañada for about 28 years. My work as a death doula, professional life cycle celebrant and family constellation facilitator. And what do these distinctions mean? In my family, my ancestral language would have called me a curandera. It means I would have been defined as a village healer and minister. In modern day times, it means that I support and I assist others through birth, death and dying. I closely walk along individuals, with individuals and families through rites of passage and have assisted through birth serious illnesses and created ceremonies for weddings, mother and baby blessings, memorials, et cetera. I have dedicated the majority of my life to the studies of life and its transitions. Over the last 10 years, my focus has been on trauma studies. Why? Because of my own personal background. I am of mixed ancestral lineage. Through these mixes, I have experienced trauma. Whether or not we like to believe it, we all come from both saints and sinners. Consequently, the majority of us live with or have some sort of trauma, which can create violence in homes and communities. My work has been as a minister in the celebrations and mornings of life's greatest joys and sadnesses. In my 30-plus years of experience, I have learned a great deal about the medicinal value of small intimate gatherings in nature surrounded by loved ones. This is something so special about a combination of nature and bringing together small communities of support, especially through the grief and loss of those who have been cared for long-term at home or for those who have ended their lives and died of drugs and alcohol. My request is to create a space in nature on the land that we are guardians of for the purpose of holding small intimate gatherings that will generally host 20 attendees and be capped at about 50. Our gatherings will also be alcohol-free, honoring those that have lost their lives to drugs and alcohol and be mindful of our windy roads. There is opposition to my petition to do what I was born to do. The opposition has misrepresented me to our community and to this gathering. Those in opposition chose to oppose by rallying support around my neighbor Martin, who has PTSD. I went to visit Martin personally and introduced myself to him and as it turns out, we may even be related. During our visit, I expressed that if at any time any of these gatherings were causing harm to him, to please let me know immediately and everything would be altered. I was then misrepresented as not caring about our surroundings and traffic and public safety. The land we purpose, propose to have events on sits between both AMA Ashram and Camp Stony. These are large event gatherings and much larger than those we propose. Along with these facts, we are also required by the county to have all attendees' cars parked on the land we propose to have our events on. My personal vow as a death doula and life cycle celebrant is to do no harm and my connection to nature is such that if I was to harm the natural world, I am literally harming myself. I was also misrepresented by the three men that created this petition, saying my only intent was to make money. If that were so, I would not do small outdoor gatherings. There is no money in that. I would not be, I would be working at a large funeral home. I would not be doing small weddings. There is no money in that either. I would be a large event planner. What I am petitioning to do is what runs in my ancestral bloodline and to offer my services as a contributing member to Cañada de Los Alamos. Life in our world is truly a gift. We currently live in a world of opposition and trauma. If we do not champion for opportunity to be in nature and to come together during our times of grief and joy, how will we ever remember? We are part of nature and it is part of us. How will we ever remember the great importance and the value of support of neighbors, friends and community? Dearest neighbors, friends and community, today I petition for your support for me to offer what I was born for. Thank you.
Ms. Simic, you mentioned that there is an ashram that's near your property. How far away is that?
About a quarter of a mile.
Just across the road from us.
Across the road from us.
And on the opposite side, going further on, there is Bishop Camp Stony.
And how far is Camp Stony?
That is further down Old Santa Fe Trail, about, I'd say about approximately a mile and a half from us.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Simic, did you want to make any statement on the application?
Well, there was some talk about ADU or we took, oh, we took the short-term rental off. We're not doing a short-term rental. And also, there was an issue about the well. I met with the state engineer and we amended the use of the well and I submitted a signed copy to the county.
Mr. Simic, is the, is your drive to your residence, is that directly off Old Santa Fe Trail?
It's directly off Old Santa Fe Trail, yes, ma'am.
Do you have any concern about the possibility of 30 or 35 cars entering and exiting for these gatherings off of Old Santa Fe Trail?
We, no, I don't have any concern for it. I mean, we have a lot of, there's quite a bit of traffic on Old Santa Fe Trail. I mean, big trucks, but have never had any problem. Yes, some people do get carried away going down the hill, even people that live there. And during the wintertime, we've had accidents going down the hill when people aren't careful. But that happens in a lot of places.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this application from anyone else in the room? Okay. Let's see. I guess we'll just start with the gentleman here in the first row, if you would.
Is that me?
Yes, it is.
Oh, hello. My Hearing Officer, my name is.
Excuse me, we're going to go with people in person here in the chambers first. We'll get to online participants shortly after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Feld and I reside at 7719 Old Santa Fe Trail. My name is Stephen Feld. I've lived at 7719 Old Santa Fe Trail for 43 years. I'm here with my immediate neighbor at 7727 Old Santa Fe Trail, David Bernbaum. And we are here to speak for 25 neighbors who object in the strongest possible terms to this application. Among us who have signed this letter are families that have lived in Cañada de Los Alamos for many generations, as well as families that have lived close by on the Old Santa Fe Trail since the 1970s. Among us are active and retired homemakers, soul and small business proprietors, artists, scientists, doctors, medical doctors and university professors. I am a retired professor at the University of New Mexico. Among us are families who live on more than 55 acres surrounding the property of concern here. And among us is the immediate neighbor who was mentioned by Ms. Simic, who is a war veteran who suffers from PTSD and who is particularly sensitive to noise and is deeply concerned about the impact of the proposal on his health. This CUP request is for a retreat and we neighbors are concerned that this term is, in this instance, deceptive because we feel that what is being requested is the transformation of residentially zoned property in a traditional village setting into a commercial location. That is, we feel that the CUP is being used as a kind of backdoor to create a commercial property in a residential area, which is specifically for the promotion of Ms. Simic's business. And our feeling is that Santa Fe offers many very appropriately zoned locations for the business of wedding and funeral celebrations. We neighbors contend that there's no reason for the county to permit such a significant and destructive change to the currently allowed and carefully considered land uses in our area. We choose and value where we live above all for its quiet and calm. That is why we feel so strongly that this proposal threatens to diminish the integrity of our rural residential community. We also feel strongly that a CUP allowing a commercial operation in a residential zone establishes a dangerous precedent because it creates inequities, which the land use code was specifically revised to prevent. The rest of us are not trying to commodify our trees, our views and our land and we do not think our neighbors should be permitted to do this. Ms. Simic has appealed directly to a number of us immediate neighbors and we appreciate that. And she has come to say that the proposed activity will be respectful and low-impact. We do not have reason to suspect that her, anything wrong with her intentions. But our response, which involves no judgment whatsoever about the character of this business, still insists that this is a business and it will not have a low impact, it will have a high impact in our area. And we want to insist on the preservation of the intention and beneficial rights, which were the purpose of the present zoning rules. So no matter what time of day or night, no matter how many people, no matter how many cars, you know, the rest of us don't want to be out there with decibel meters. We don't want to be calling the county. We don't want to be calling the Simic family. We don't want to get involved in, you know, antagonistic conversations about cars, parking issues and noise. And we, neighbors believe that the principle at issue here is not the nature of the business, not the nature of the activities that are being proposed, but rather the unwanted intrusion of disruptive commerce into a rural residential area. We really wish to urge that the county respects this principle and respects the plea of us surrounding residents who do not want our privacy and our longstanding rural residential way of life denigrated. We appreciate that the county has preserved the code in the immediate past to prevent intrusive uses of land in our area, specifically in the case of the AMA Center. intrusive uses of land in our area, specifically in the case of the AMA Center. And we're very mindful that it's especially important right now to remain vigilant about traffic control, which I thank you for raising in your questioning, in an area where close to a thousand people might need to evacuate quickly by way of just one narrow and twisting two-lane road in the case of an emergency like a wildfire, which clearly, in a year where we've had less than thirty percent of our typical snowfall and very dry conditions, is clearly a present danger that we're all really quite concerned about. Very sincerely, we are in order of proximity on the Old Santa Fe Trail, and all of our names and addresses are listed here. And I would like to put this document into the records for this case.
Mr. Feld, I may have that. Is that, I was just looking at it. Is that the letter dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Yes. Additional signatures have signed on in the time since that letter that you've received.
All right.
So I will leave a copy for you.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You mentioned the AMA Center, is that the ashram?
Yes. The AMA Center was, is, which is, as Mr. Simic stated, about, you know, right across the street from them, maybe a quarter mile away.
And when was that established?
The AMA Center was established as a retreat, what is it, twenty-two, twenty-five years ago, almost? It's almost twenty-five years, I believe. But there was an application for buildings, additional buildings, and for additional activity. And it was contested, and it was, and that proposal was denied by the county.
And do you recall what year that was?
Was that twenty-eighteen?
I'm guessing it's about twenty-eighteen.
I believe it was twenty-eighteen. Who was our legal representative?
Carl Sommer.
Yeah, it was Carl Sommer in that case. Carl Sommer represented the residents who were opposed to the development of the AMA Center and the number of cars and additional buildings and infrastructure that was being proposed at that time.
And that was denied?
That was denied, yes.
And I'm aware that Camp Stoney has been there for quite a long time. And is, are there activities still at Camp Stoney?
Well, Camp Stoney does have, particularly during the summertime, retreat activities. Camp Stoney also hosts various, Camp Stoney has been the host of a number of meetings that we've had among the residents in relation to fire protection and community organization. Camp Stoney, as well as the church of the village of Canyada de los Alamos, have been involved in supporting the community in that way.
Yes, please, would you come forward?
Yes, I do. It's David Bernbaum, and I live at seventy-seven twenty-seven Old Santa Fe Trail. You're very welcome. So I have lived at the same, on the same hillside since nineteen-seventy-nine, so it's forty-six years in August since I moved there. And I want to immediately address the fact that it's a wonderful thing that we recently were granted the designation of a community association for the traditional village that is more formal and has enlarged the area involved. But the incredible way that the community has worked together during the entire time that I've lived there really makes it a justification for a wonderful organization. So now we are officially an association, and I know that many of the people who signed the letter are part of that association. We always have, over the years, come together when necessary in order to prevent development that was going to bring, you know, attempts to bring, to do lot splits that were inappropriate. I'm gonna jump right away to the issue of water. I have, beginning in nineteen-eighty-one, when I had a well drilled on my property, I have had problems with not enough water from my wells, and I've drilled four different wells. And I also transported water using trailers and tanks in the back of my truck in the winter and on a regular basis in order to supplement the water that we needed for our home. And my wife and I raised two children, I actually had two children. When I met my wife, so four children, we're growing up in a house where we had to actually bring water from town for long periods of time. Right now, my well is, was drilled in two thousand, the year two thousand, it's six-hundred-and-eighty feet deep, and its maximum production, quite coincidentally, is around two-hundred-and-ten gallons per day. If it's, you know, used properly stressed prior to the test, you would discover that it only can refill my tanks at that rate of two-hundred-and-ten. Well, like I said, very coincidentally, that is almost exactly a quarter acre foot per year. So two-hundred-and-ten gallons per day is very close to being the legally, my property is in an area above seventy-four hundred feet, and I worked very hard when they were doing the new Sustainable Land Use Code. I was raising the issue, well, what happened to the mountain? Oh, there was an area that was designated a mountain.
A basin.
Yeah. And so they had, in the process of putting together the county's Sustainable Land Use thing, they had sort of dropped all of the protections. That was shiny roofs and too much glass and too many long, long driveways snaking up the hills. They were trying to prevent it from looking like Los Angeles. And they also limited the use of water to a quarter acre foot per year. So once I brought it to the attention of the people who were working on the Sustainable Code, they agreed to actually improve upon the situation, and they designated that all of the areas in Santa Fe County that are above seventy-four hundred feet would be within that zone, that would be subject to the same kind of restrictions that were in the zone. You know, limits on how, you can't build on a ridgethup if they're somewhere else you could build, limits on how much water you can use, limit on driveway lengths, and on the steepness of the slope that you can build on. And some properties were made unbuildable, buildable. People had bought land, and they had to surrender their intention of building a home on it because there was no place that met the requirements. So anyway, they actually enlarged that area to include all, everywhere above seventy-four hundred square feet, I mean, seventy-four hundred feet of altitude. And certainly, the Simics property, like mine, falls in that category. And very few people, if any, keep track, as I do quite regularly, of the usage by climbing down into my well pit and reading the meter. The county unfortunately does not monitor the metered well use, and if they did, I'm sure that probably well over fifty percent of people are in excess of the amount which is legally allowed, a quarter acre foot per year. And so for them, they, you know, no matter how much water they might bring in, in bottles or jugs, or how they might try to reduce the use, there is absolutely no doubt about it that that two-hundred-and-ten, that quarter acre foot per year restriction would not possibly allow these type of gatherings, not, I'm not gonna say it can't be, somebody would have to be monitoring that and confirming, somebody, the well would have to be read, and there would have to be a continuous presence by the village people in order to make sure that they weren't overusing. And it actually makes a difference, because in many of these events, all over all these years, the problem is too many straws in one glass. So when you have an area where everybody's well is just marginal, and you have two more people build a house, now everybody who was there discovers that their well can go dry much more easily, that we're all into the same aquifer, and it's all solid granite, just moving in small cracks. So you really have to take into account the fact that it's inappropriate to bring that number of people, regardless of the issue of, to change from a residential to a commercial zoning. There is actually a physical and very, very important reason, and that is water usage. We don't have enough water to share it with the clients of this proposed business. So I know that I need to limit my amount of time that I take up here, but I was the president of the Preserve the Trail Association, which we were, it came to our attention that the AMA Center was building a large building, and they were trying to say that it was a, you know, some kind of a, like a farm building, a barn or something like that. They were misstating what they were gonna use it for. And it was quite clear to us, because we had been kept awake at night for many years by the chanting on microphones that the several thousand people would do, that she, that AMA brought, and the owners of the property brought tremendous numbers of people from out of state. The road was very, very backed up, you had to be waiting in line to get to your own house. So we opposed those things, and it was a successful, they were allowed to continue having a limited, and regular events, where they have people who come and worship or meditate or whatever. But it's a small number of people, and there are a lot of limitations that were included, the well matter. I remember raising that matter myself. But it was a long and expensive fight for the community. We had to create an association by, you know, creating an LLC. So we worked very hard to prevent that. And it's not the same story as what we have going on or the request that's before you, because there was plenty of time for the two sides to look for different ways to compromise or whatever. And then there was, it came down to the lawyers and to lots of late nights at the commission meetings, and we finally were able to get a reasonable solution that honored the residential nature. And it's not just the residential nature, because the traditional village makes it more than residential. It means, you know, we have a, we are one body, we have, it's like we are one family, and we have always worked to try to make sure to limit the use of water particularly. But also, the thing about the fire escape, that's extremely important. I've spent a fortune and a tremendous amount of labor trying to get my property as fireproofed as I can. But you could easily have an accident, just like the people in Paradise, California, you could get on the road to get out of there, and then somebody has had an accident ahead of you, and you end up dying in your car in a traffic jam. And we're in that situation. The road is extremely steep and extremely windy, and the firefighters would have to be coming in on one of the two lanes. So all you need is somebody to have a fender bender or jackknife their trailer or whatever, and you have people trapped there. And it just does not make sense. That was a big deal with the AMA Center, was the county agreed, it just did not make sense to be bringing a large number of people in to a situation which would be terribly exacerbated. It's bad enough as it is, we don't need additional groups, large groups of people to come in. And people like that are not gonna be as naturally careful as we are where we live. So anyway, I'll leave it at that for now. I really, really hope that the county, the work on the Sustainable Land Use Code was long and grueling, and it's a very good document, and a lot of people spent a lot of time on that. And to start eroding it by allowing a commercial use in a residential, traditional village is a terrible, sad precedent, because that's exactly what the code was made for, is to avoid that kind of conflict. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bernbaum. Are there other comments? Yes?
My name is Gabriela Rodke.
Yes, my name is.
R-O-D-K-E.
My name is Andrew Rodke. Our address is seventeen twelve thirty.
Hello. Thank you for all your patience and listening to all this. We were both married by Christina, and we wanted to testify just on the nature of her work, is like a very beautiful, very intimate space that she creates. And I find it kind of hard to translate what she does into the modern world, because so much of it is like business and commercial, but that's just not what she does all. These are beautiful, small, death, wedding, family gatherings, and there's something that, before our world was modernized, was held in the home. It was held in like a very sacred, special place. And she was able to create an incredible ceremony for us, and I, it's something that I hope that other people can have with her and other people can experience. She's an incredibly conscientious person. She has a lot of reverence for the land. During our ceremony, she had everyone like really recognize the land that we were standing on. She's from this place, and I really hope that she can continue her work. It's been incredibly healing to us and meaningful, and the way in which she approaches it and does it is very intimate and beautiful and sovereign and very mindful of the environment that she's in. So it's my prayer that she can continue her work.
Ms. Rodke, I missed it. Did you say that you are a neighbor, you live in this community?
We do not live in the community. We were married by her. We have experience with her work.
All right. Thank you.
Christina plays a vital role in our community. She holds the community together when, when people transition. And I met her when one of my best friends transitioned suddenly, and the whole community was in shatters. But she held the space together so we could heal and grieve together. There's, I don't know about you, but I've had many, many friends commit suicide in this city. And a lot of that is because it's unprocessed grief, and it's not holding ceremony with family to communicate and share the pain. So Christina not only holds space for people that are dying and the families that have to deal with that transition and that grief, she also holds space for celebrations of life, like our wedding. And because of that, she holds so much respect of what she brings together and holds ceremony for. She really interviewed us really in depth, to be like, is this truly the connection that you're committing to? We made a commitment, and now we have a child. And we're together because she's able to hold space and ceremony for people. So for the community of Canyada de los Alamos, I would be excited that she's offering this service to the community that is so vital. And, you know, if there can be some things figured out, that if there's water issues, then maybe they have a cistern put in. We've been to the property, and there's adequate parking off of the street, and so it wouldn't be blocking the road. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Christine Montano Carey, thirty-eight eighty-eight Montana Verde Road, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Members of the commission, good afternoon. My name is Christine Montano Carey. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Christina Miestas Simic and her husband Tom Simic. I know most people think, oh yeah, a mother will say anything for their children. That has never been my mantra. My children grew up knowing faith, respect, hard work, family, and friends are what make good character. I have never known another woman that follows these rules more than Christina, her brother and sister as well. They learned from early on that our ancestry, which goes back to the first settlers here in New Mexico, way before New Mexico was even a state, has always been a great influence on who they are today. Christina and Tom's respect for not only the people who live here, but the land we live on has always been their priority. Christina has followed her heart. Christina has followed her heart of giving since she was a child. She has always been the nurturer, the caregiver, the fixer of everything broken. She even strongly tried to save trees at two different times when they had to be removed due to roots growing under the house. To that end, her years of training and education from respiratory therapist to artist to business owner to construction doing faux finishing and plaster repair work to death doula, where she has been there for families at their worst time in their lives to help them gently through their loss. And finally, as a marriage and wedding facilitator. They are only asking for this permit to use their beautiful mountain property to host small celebrations of life as well as small weddings. They, unlike so many, have never looked to the government nor anyone else to support them. They continue through hard work and dedication, using their gifts to want to not only, to provide not only these services for others, but for themselves in their retirement. I ask you to please consider what I have stated and not what a few handful of others are protesting, when it has not impacted them or their properties personally in any way. Christina and Tom have always and will continue to be community oriented and happy to meet with any neighbors who have any questions or any problems that they can solve together. I know there's a lot of people here and we don't have time for everyone to speak, so I'd like to have just the people that are here to represent and support this request at least stand before any other speak. Would you stand? And these are but a few handful that took time out of their busy days and work schedules to show their support for what Christina and Tom are requesting. I thank you and God bless.
Ms. Carey, could you, could you give me an idea about how many people, including yourself, that are standing, live in this community that Simic's property is?
I'm not sure who all lives in the community, but they've all been to her property. They know Christina, some of them from her, since she was a child. Others are coworkers, people that have worked with her, people who has, she has provided services for when no one else was around to help them. And like the gentleman before me stated, people that have committed suicide, she has actually talked them through this. This is who she is and this is what she's attempting to do. It's not about the money. It's not about big commercialism. It's about her desire and what she was born to do and that's help people through sadness and through happiness. And I'm sure that they are willing and able to, if, if a problem would arise, they could even lower the amount of people that they would allow at any, at any particular event.
Thank you, Ms. Carey, for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wants to make a comment? Yes? Okay.
I currently live at 10 Eagle Ridge Road, Ilfeld. The time I'm speaking about that I know Christina from, I was living in Santa Fe at 41 Sonrisa My name is Margot Gwynn. I'm the mother of four children and four grandchildren. I've known Christina for over six years. In February of 2019, our family lost my youngest daughter, Kayla, to suicide. She was almost 27. A friend recommended I contact Christina to perform the memorial ceremony for Kayla. I did so and Christina met with our whole family at her home the day before the service. She talked with each of us and her compassion and calmness gave us the strength and support to get through one of the worst times in our lives. The next day, Christina facilitated the memorial service in a loving and respectful way that helped everyone there to remember Kayla's beautiful spirit and the joy she brought to our lives. We will always be grateful. Since that time, I have kept in touch with Christina and have always felt her strength and support for our family through the years. I urge you to take every measure to ensure that Christina can continue to provide her very needed and valuable services to our families and community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
814 Camino de Monterrey, Santa Fe. Good afternoon. My name is Alexis McNauton and I'm here to voice my support for the landowner's request for approval of a conditional use permit for their mountain property for small-scale events. This land is uniquely suited for intimate gatherings like weddings, retreats, and community workshops that benefit from the peaceful and scenic mountain setting. The owners have a clear vision for a quiet, well-managed space that complements the natural surroundings and respects the character of the area. Their plan is not for large or disruptive operations, but for carefully limited events that support local culture and small business while maintaining the serenity of the mountain environment. I believe this permit would strike a responsible balance between private property rights and thoughtful land use. I respectfully ask for your support in helping bring more community-focused activity to our region. I would also like to add that I have known Christina Simic for more than 10 years. What she provides the community and visitors is an essential service to our overall well-being. She is extremely conscious of including all opinions and experiences in her work. I have experienced what she offers and felt the results. And I have assisted her with holistic gatherings. She makes this world a better place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ellen Antil. 2988 Plaza Azul, Santa Fe. Okay. Thank you for hearing all of us who wish to come forward. I'm gonna keep this brief. I have known Christina for about nine years as a friend and a fellow death doula. She is a beautiful bringer of life into our community, a preserver of love and compassion and community. And I believe with all my heart that Christina and Tom will ensure that the center that they wanna create in this community is going to be one of the most beautiful, life-serving entities in our community. And we should all be really grateful that it, it is a part of the world that we live in. So, I really hope that you carefully consider the life-giving elements that Christina and Tom bring and how thankful we need to be that there are people, people like this in our midst who are willing to give so compassionately and quite unselfishly to the wellness of everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Alessandro Minoli. 19 Jack Rabbit Lane, Santa Fe, New Mexico. I do. Hello. Hi. I, I'll also make brief comments. I met Christina at a very vulnerable time for our family. My father-in-law, Robert, was dying and he had chosen to come home for hospice care. We had no idea, we were given some guidance on how to deal with the medical, but no one was there to help us, guide us through the spiritual process of what was happening. And we were quite lost during that time. Christina really has an incredible gift. She was able to guide our family through a process that we otherwise would have been completely emotionally lost in. And, you know, I think one thing that's clear in some of these testimonies is that what she is doing is not easy work. It's very difficult work and it requires incredible strength. And I think that the intention here should also be clear. She's here to help the community and to help individuals and families. This is not a, this is not, if, if the goal was making money, I don't think this is the right business for, you know, this is something that is really for helping people. And my own personal experience on the land and the property is of, like some people have expressed, the most serene, respectful, small, but very important and spiritually powerful ceremonies. I think a lot of people come to Santa Fe for some form of healing or some form of learning how to connect with each other in ways that aren't available in other places. And I think that Christina is an incredible gift to this place. And I think that we are very lucky to have her here and should find a way to support what she is trying to do because it's a desperately needed gift to any community and we're lucky to have her here. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Patricia Rivera. 105 Caye Royale, Santa Fe, New Mexico, also resident of Pecos, New Mexico, in the mountains on the river. Thank you for holding this and I would like to say that I am an acknowledged educator of Santa Fe. I grew up in Santa Fe. My family are born in Santa Fe and the ancestral part of land, it touches my heart. Oddly enough, I am a business educator and so I know the definition of business and I know the idea of capitalism. And yes, we do have businesses in Santa Fe, burial businesses, wedding chapels, et cetera. But what we don't have is a space that is very intimate, very personal, that involves the very people whose lives are being touched by whatever is happening, be it trauma, be it a baptism. We are very used to this community of celebrating because our roots are here. Our roots of my grandparents, my ancestors, their ancestors. We have an extreme respect for the land. The land was not a commodity. Our place of living here in Santa Fe, it becomes a place of honor, a place to share, a place to welcome, welcome people into our homes, be it the celebration of a graduation of our children, a confirmation, a communion, a wedding, or saying goodbye to somebody we love. I've had those experiences, many of them. And through the grace and through the heartfelt ability of this individual, Christina, who has been gifted in our lives and is a gift to this community, she came and she helped in a time of need and at a time of celebration. Yes, we do have other locations in this community, but what we don't have is a space where it's safe, where it's welcoming, where it's personal, where it's intimate, and where people feel they are themselves and expressing with the support that somebody was born with a heart to help us through these times. And those people are far and few in between. So, I say, thank you. Please consider this. Please consider this as a gift to this community. And whatever the logistics, I'm a property owner. Yes, I've had rentals. I, I understand and I have a great, great respect for the land, as does she, as does she, as she blessed my property in Pecos with the elements, the very elements of that community, the river, the water, the land. I understand that. I have witnessed it and I'm hoping, and I invite you, be open and perhaps if you went and visited and participated or talked to people other than who came to testify today, what touched you? What, why, why are we here to support her and why do we need this type of support? There's not a lot of it in time. And I hope, I hope that in your heart of hearts, you understand the gift that this person can bring to a community, especially in the times when the need and the hearts of people and their minds and their trauma. As an educator, I've seen it with children. I've seen, I've seen lots and lots in, in my experience as an educator in this life. So, I just welcome you to open your hearts, open your minds, and maybe talk to some other people. Why did it make a difference? Why can you stand up today after going through deep grief? Why can you stand today thinking, oh my gosh, this was the best baptism? Because it wasn't in a confined space. It was in a welcoming, warm, personal space for people to rejoice and celebrate, whether that celebration is joyful or it's a very tug on our heart because our heart's been broken with the loss of a very dear loved one. So, thank you for all your time and being here and I do invite you, I do invite you sometime, maybe participate, go by, talk to her, talk to me. I am more than welcome, welcoming you to ask me and to share my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Are there more people in the room? Sorry? No, I was just thanking you for your comments.
Oh, you're welcome.
My name is Ramon Bermudas. I live at 2134 Camino Polvoso. I am and I have been a professional musician in Santa Fe since 1986. My comments come from my workings with Christina as a professional musician. I have had the privilege to be a part of several of Christina's special wedding events as a participating musician over the years. I would like to describe in short what my experiences have been. I would say Christina's events are meticulously prepared with care, much respect, and heartfelt. I appreciate being part of a wonderful coming together of human beings and my working with Christina Maesta Simic has been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did. I'm sorry. Yeah. Rusty Rodkey, R-O-D-K-E, 169 Hayosis Road. But I'm hearing officer and staff, appreciate your time and energy and appreciate all the people that have come out for this matter. I've known Christina for over 20 years through Toastmasters, a public speaking group here in Santa Fe. And through Toastmasters, she, she has shared many, many stories that at the Santa Fe Community College, we had a lot of students in the club and it's given them hope. And she also was the celebrant for my son's wedding. They spoke earlier, Andrew and Aurora. She brings a lot of healing. There was losses at Santa Fe Community College faculty that she presided over ceremonies for and it was, it was very healing. As far as some of the concerns that were brought up, as she said and as it says in the application, no impact to the well or the neighboring wells for, because... for, because they would bring in additional water. I think it's in the interest of the public welfare to and for the county to facilitate this healing space and for her to want to share her land with folks that have joys and sorrows. And they say that a glass half-full of water, is it full or half-full or half-empty? Well, if your life is half-full of joy and half-full of sorrows, then you have a full life. And she helps with both ends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodkey.
Yes. My name is Assen, A-S-S-E-N, Popoff, P-O-P-O-F-F, 1706 Camino de la Conquistadora. I was a former direct neighbor of the Semics, and I can certainly attest to her great character and the need that she fulfills in people and bringing them together. I guess it's the bureaucracy, it's a bureaucratic point that you need to have a business license in order to regularly gather people for some purposes, as I found out where we'd like to have sometimes yoga sessions. And the neighbors would say, you can't, you've got too many people. I think we had a discussion, Mr. Ramon. We had a county representative come down, and he basically told us, you could have every Sunday a gathering for a Super Bowl, big party, we can have 20 or 30 people, no big problems. But if you have a regular gathering of even smaller people, you need a business license in order to facilitate parking and, and traffic. So I guess that's the reason for them applying for the business license. And people need to be able to come to Christina, whatever size, up to a certain point is certainly feasible to accommodate the parking and the traffic. Tom, being a contractor, he knows how to prepare the land, and he's... The access to his property, there are good two and a half to three cars worth before you even get to his gate that can accommodate waiting traffic. So there is, and his driveway is long, and so there is no problem in getting the cars to flow in. Where his property joins Old Santa Fe Trail, it's on a smooth, straight section. There is good visibility. So there are no, it's not a hidden driveway. And I address those problems that you had. And that's my comment. So I, they're worth having people over. We never had, we were in the same arroyo right behind them. The acoustics are such that it does not spread over the Canadá de los Alamos area. The Semics, I believe, are the very last property within the community of Canadá de los Alamos also.
Mr. Popoff, do you live in that community?
Not anymore. I used to be their direct neighbor.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments in, in this room? Yes, they just keep coming.
My name is Barbara Powell. My address is 57 Apache Creek Road, Santa Fe. So there are barely any other words that can be said to further describe the incredible offering that Christina makes in the world. And if I may say so, in this moment in time, it just could not be more important. Again, we were next-door neighbors, and the way that they treat their land and the love that they have for the land was mirrored by us. We have the same feeling. And there is no question in my mind that anything that they would do there would be anything but mindful and with love with Mother Earth all around. Christina's work is beyond description, and the people that have received her work, her love, her care, never forget, and I'm one. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Powell.
Welcome.
Are there any other comments coming? Very briefly, yes. As a matter of fact, Mr. Sisner, are there people online that are also wanting to comment on this case?
I believe there are. I would ask anyone online, I'd invite you to please use the raise hand function, and then we'll call on you accordingly.
Thank you.
Bria Semic, I'm La Cor Lane. Hello, my name is Bria Semic. I'm the daughter of Tom and Christina. And I was raised in these mountains. And when we first moved out there, we lived at the very end of the road, as far as you can go. And I can tell you that my dad, he's a contractor. He's built multiple houses through these mountains. My mom was a plaster repair, faux finish, plaster repairer and faux finish person. And she worked throughout multiple homes within these mountains. Growing up, I babysat, house-sat, dog-sat throughout all the houses throughout the mountains. This is further back. And as we got closer, because we got older, I have siblings, and our home was a place that a lot of people would come to if they didn't have parents, if they had been through tragedy, and they would stay with us. And because of that, and because of the love in our home and what my parents were able to provide, they turned their lives around. And that happened to multiple people. And so I was always jealous having to share my family because of the community that they would bring. But now, as an adult, it's an amazing thing. So I've been able to witness this. My parents have never planted anything in the ground that didn't grow on its own because they didn't want to use more water than they needed to. We've never were allowed to light anything outside so that nothing would catch fire. Like, my parents are one with the earth, and they love the earth. And my children have gone out there and grown up there, as you can hear, she wants to be a part of this. And the community, the events, everything that goes on, it is nothing compared to what you would find at a commercial business. Their business is all throughout the mountains. I've helped people with their businesses at their homes. And so for my parents wanting to do everything right, because they're, they're people who want to follow rules. They don't do anything outside of that. They wanted to make sure they did everything properly, and going through this process was part of that. And so my dad has done everything on the land to make sure that everything could be up to par. There's parking for everyone everywhere for the amount of people that would be coming. I mean, everything that's done on that land, he's done himself, and it's all been done properly. The water, I could never see being an issue because my mom and my dad barely use any water on their own. A lot of the things that are the issues just don't seem relevant for the area. Growing up there, I would hear ATVs racing through everywhere. There'd be parties in the forest behind our house all the time. People weren't complaining about it. There's gunshots that go off through the mountains, and nobody complains about it. So the fact that my parents would be an issue is just, or what they're trying to do there would be an issue. I just don't understand how that can be when what they provide to the community is just so great. So I hope that you guys will consider what they're doing. And like many other people said before, go out and see for yourself if that's something. I know that their doors are open to anybody because that's what they do and that's what they bring. So thank you for hearing me. Sorry for the little person. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else in this room that wants to make a comment? Yes, would you like to wait until after the comments online?
We do have a couple people online wishing to participate. I'd like to remind everyone to please stay muted until you're called upon. I'm going to call on Matthew Gwynn. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me all right? Yes.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Gwynn. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony is the truth?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And your name and address, please.
My name is Matthew Gwynn. I reside at 10 Eagle Ridge Road in Ilford, New Mexico.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good, sorry about the delay. Good afternoon, Hearing Officer Abear. I think it's been well-stated already at this point, the purpose of the gatherings and the benefit to the community. I wanted to propose a... If, if it appears that the traffic is too much in that area, which I have been to that area very often, I've attended gatherings past that point. The, just in my, in my opinion, there will not be an issue with traffic in the area. But I have heard the concerns of the opposition that there could be too much traffic coming through off of Old Santa Fe Trail, and also that there's a potential issue with water usage. It does seem to me that the water usage can be easily managed and has already been considered. And, and the traffic, the potential traffic conditions could be turned into a proposal for measurable performance. Perhaps the, the traffic can be monitored over a conditional approval over a year's time. And the water could be monitored as well as was discussed previously. And so I just wanted to encourage, encourage you to consider possibilities for approving this proposal for the benefit to the community that it offers while also considering ways of measuring potential impact and conditioning the approval upon a renewal of a, of a year's period of time. So I wanted to say that and propose that at the outset. And on a personal level, I just wanted to say that I have been very deeply impacted by the work of, of Ms. Semic and was helped through a very difficult period of my life where I lost my sister to suicide. I just wanted to say there's not that many people who can fill that role, and it's a very important role to be able to be there for families and people in their deepest time of need. And that the ripple effect of that kind of support to the community is, is very hard to measure and very profoundly positive. And in closing, I just wanted to state as well that, you know, Ms. Semic has been traveling around to the community to perform these duties. And honestly, it's only a period of time where that will become more and more difficult for her to be able to conduct these very important ceremonies and community offerings on her own land where it does not impact anyone else should be allowed, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn.
Hearing Officer, we have Linda Hoyson next to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Yes, good evening. Hello, can you hear me?
The court reporter will swear you in. Linda, before you speak, I need to swear you in.
Yes, that's fine.
That your testimony will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name and address in the record, please.
Yes, my name is Linda Hoyson. I am a previous resident of Montana Verde Road in Santa Fe. I currently live in Fairfax, Virginia. And I really was compelled to provide a testimonial in support of all of Christina's efforts. And on January 12th, 2022, not long after the passing of my husband in November 2021, my family and friends were all assembled at Christina's home for an opportunity to celebrate the life of a man lost sadly way too soon and much too unexpectedly. At Christina's home, you can see the clear blue New Mexico morning sky where we sat for the service. The setting was inviting and peaceful. The pine trees just quietly whispered the sound of surrounding mountains and the awareness of other times. There really was an aura of new beginnings as well as solemn acceptance. Christina's home, an intimate, serene setting set well off the Santa Fe Trail, provided a private place where we could connect not just with my husband's spirit and his presence of being, but with nature as well, something very important to him. And even though it was January, having the celebration of his life be outdoors was especially fitting. And Christina's commitment, which established a feeling of comfort and connection, allowing my family and friends to contribute and engage in the experience, went above and beyond. Christina's guidance and leadership maintained a sense of dignity and respect throughout the entire planning time as well as during the memorial itself. Family members and friends couldn't help but comment on the depth of the experience, the care and the work which had gone into organizing the service. Christina had set out an assortment of photographs, memorabilia, and personal items representative of my husband's life, lovingly displayed so that everyone could connect in an even more intimate way with my husband and to what the meaning and purpose of his life had been. After the ceremony, we all felt the need to process the event along with the feelings of serenity resulting from everyone being together with Christina's direction to honor a special man. More than one person shared with me how the ceremony allowed them to reflect on their own situations, things that may have been unsaid to loved ones now departed, and how the peace and quiet of Christina's home and garden contributed to their own experiences of loss, loss. Most poignant, however, was how one friend was finally able to feel closure over the loss of a sibling from COVID, something they had been unable to do, given all that was denied as a result of the pandemic. In conclusion, I remain thankful to Christina for her skills, her sensitivity, her insight, to have had an opportunity to honor and celebrate the life of my husband in her home in this intimate corner of Santa Fe, right near the Santa Fe Trail, was something he would have indeed wholeheartedly embraced. No other place would have been right. And for that, I am profoundly grateful. And thank you all so much for this opportunity this evening.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Hearing Officer Abear, I do see Scott Kuiper physically raising his hand. I do remind everyone, if you wish to speak on this matter, please use the raise hand function. Mr. Scott, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, Madam Hearing Officer, County Commissioners. My name's Scott Kuipers. I live at 35... Yes.
Thanks. Do you swear or affirm your testimony will be the truth?
I do.
And your name and your...
My name is Scott Kuipers, and I live at 35 Kenyatta Village Road. I'm about a quarter mile from Christina and Tom Semic's property. They're asking for the variance on. And a little bit of history of the village here. I've been in the village for 40 years. In 1998, there was a group of graduate students that came out, and they were in and out of this village for a year doing a big graduate project on urban planning. They wrote a plan for the village that I believe the county adopted in 98. And it laid out the three-quarter acre minimum lot size, which we have here in the traditional part of the village, and also that those properties... And also that those properties would be zoned mixed use or, or that there would be, allow light commercial activity here. As so many of the residents here already have commercial activities, including some of the people that have spoken here today, you know, against Christina Simic. I mean, we've got a sawmill here. We've got a vet here who runs her, her office from the village. And there's quite a few businesses already being run from the village. So, you know, granting Christina this license, this conditional license, is not going to, is not going to change that there's already commercial activity going on here. You know, it's just one more commercial activity. So I, my testimony is in support of their, their petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing Officer Abear, next we have Brad Childs. Brad, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Brad Childs.
Hello, Mr. Childs, do you swear or affirm your testimony will be the truth?
I do.
Would you also provide your address?
Yeah, Bradley Childs, 46 Treehouse Road, Santa Fe. So I'm a neighbor of Tom and Christina. And I'm very positive about their project. I believe it'll be a benefit for the local community and all their activities, doing so on their property. I've seen firsthand the quality of their work and really the heartfelt services that they provide. Christina's services are really extraordinary. I don't see how their proposed activities will create any negativity in our community. People talked about the positives and the negatives, but truly, we don't have a traffic issue right now. And as Scott was saying earlier, there's many home-based businesses in community. People have right, owners have right to use their property. And I think the Simics should have the right to use their property for such a positive community service. And it seems like the staff have vetted them so well, from what I heard. And it's really a, a, a give and take. We have to be there for each other. And our small community will come together when there's challenges. And we have to support one another. So I think it's zoned appropriately. They have right to use their property for these types of services. And the good outweighs any of the perceived potential negativity. So I'm hardly in support. And I think it'll be a positive difference if they're allowed to implement their project in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Childs.
Hearing Officer Abear, there's nobody else online who wishes to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. I'm sorry, did you want to speak on this matter? Did you want to speak on this matter? Well, then come forward.
My name is Mika Simic and I live on 9 Lecor Lane. I am the granddaughter of Christina Maestra Simic and Tom Simic. I'm 12 years old. I know I have, I have not experienced as much life as others that have spoken. But I do know my grandmother Christina will provide nothing but safety, care, and comfort to people. But not only that, the land and nature around the property. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Simic.
Hearing Officer Abear.
Yes.
Staff has a few comments.
All right. Would, I think that there was one of the witnesses earlier that wanted to make a brief comment. Is he still in the room? I don't see him.
Hearing Officer Abear, he has left the building.
All right, so Mr. Lovato, yes.
Hearing Officer Abear, no inherent right exists to receive a CUP. And CUPs are generally compatible with the, with the land uses within certain areas and permitted by zoning districts. In addition, conditions can be implemented by staff, the Hearing Officer, or Planning Commission. Therefore, staff, upon hearing the concerns of tonight's audience and some of the members, has wished to implement a few more conditions of approval and recommend those conditions. And the first one would be no more than 20 attendings per event. The applicant shall submit a site threshold analysis, which would determine if traffic impact analysis is required. And no offsite, additionally, no offsite parking shall be allowed. And the applicant shall utilize an area onsite or offsite on their existing property for overflow parking. Thank you, Hearing Officer.
Mr. Lovato, are those two conditions or three? Did you have the?
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Hearing Officer. So implement no more than 20 attendees per event is one. The applicant shall submit a site threshold analysis as two. As three, no offsite parking shall be allowed. And four, the applicant shall obtain overflow parking on the existing adjacent property which they own.
Thank you. If there are no other comments on this matter, I will prepare a recommended order in 15 business days. And thank you all for your attendance. The next case is case 255050, new wireless communication facility conditional use permit.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Abear. John Lovato, Building Development Services Supervisor. New wireless communication facility conditional use permit. Verizon cell tower applicant Pinnacle Consulting agent requests a conditional use permit to allow the placement of 120-foot wireless communication facility and a 40-by-40 compound to enclose the equipment within the proposed leased area. The site is within the residential zoning district, Table 10-3. Allows for the height of 120 feet within the rural zoning district. Appendix B use matrix illustrates the new wireless facility within the rural zoning district as a conditional use permit. The site is located at, in New Mexico 14, at Camino Conseria. Facility will be south of Camino Conserio, SDA 2, within Section 20 Township 14 North, Range 8 East, Commission District 3. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the placement of a new 120-foot wireless communication facility in a 40-by-40 locked fence compound on 6.24 acres. The wireless facility will be painted and maintained at an adobe finish. Panel and tunnels will be located on a monopole on the centerline elevation of 116 feet and grouped in three sectors for full spectrum coverage around the surrounding terrain. The applicant states the proposed facility is greatly needed to improve the quality of wireless service and coverage to the surrounding area for safety and general communication needs. With increased development and visitors in the area, a need for dependable wireless service is vital to the support of the growing traffic commuting along New Mexico 14. Verizon Wireless will be the initial carrier to locate on the wireless facility with the capability of other carriers to co-locate in the future. Representing both Sun State Towers and Verizon Wireless, Pinnacle Consulting has been requested for services in the development of the facility. Working together with the property owner and nearby communities, we request to review approval to build the new proposed wireless facility as part of a large effort to improve wireless services in the part of New Mexico. Local New Mexico emergency responders and residents have expressed the need for improved wireless facilities due to the lack of wireless infrastructure nearby. These space access and utilities are labeled in dimensions in the site plans attached as approved by the property owner. Cable and conduit necessary for the facility be routed to an improved utility easement underground. All facility plans will be designed and engineered to meet local guidelines and the FCC, FFA respectively to ensure safety compliance. All required environmental reports and GEO studies will be submitted prior to final approval. The applicant has addressed the conditional use criteria and staff has responded as contained in the memo. The applicant has addressed and staff has reviewed the following applicable design standards as per Chapter 7 Sustainable Design Standards of the SLDC. And the applicant has met all the design criteria. The applicant has addressed design standards set forth in Chapter 10, Section 10.17 of the SLDC. And the applicant has met the review standards for Chapter 10, Section 10.17 of the SLDC. Building and Development Staff Services have reviewed this project for compliance with permanent SLDC requirements and has found that the facts presented support the request for a conditional use permit. To construct a new 120-foot monopole on a 40-by-40 compound, the facility meets the proposed, the purpose and intent outlined in Section 10.17.2 of the SLDC. The use structure will not impact adjacent land uses. And the applicant satisfies the supplemental requirements set forth in the SLDC inclusive of the conditional use permit, or criteria set forth in Chapter 4, Section 4.9.6.5. Review comments from the historic preservation and county staff has established findings that the application to allow 120-foot wireless communication facility and 40-by-40 compound is in compliance with state requirements, standards identified in the SLDC, Section 912.3, and required design standards set forth in Chapter 7 SLDC. Also, the FCC will consult with New Mexico SHPO for review under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow the placement of a new 120-foot wireless communication facility and a 40-by-40 compound. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions being imposed, Hearing Officer. And may I enter those into the record?
Yes, please, but I have a question about the second condition. I believe it shall not exceed 120 feet instead of 150 feet. Is that correct? Because if you look at your report on page nine, Table 10-3, you had a cutoff portion of Table 10-3. And the rural residential, I believe the limit is 120 feet, not 150 feet. Isn't that correct?
Hearing Officer, you're absolutely correct. That is a typo.
So we'll, we'll just correct that to the 120.
Hearing Officer, this report and exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Staff requests the Hearing Officer to memorialize findings of fact and conclusions of law in a written order. The Santa Fe County Planning Commission may be holding a public hearing on this matter on June 18, 2025. Thank you, Hearing Officer, and I stand for any questions.
No, the only question I had was about that table. Thank you, Mr. Lovato. Oh, Mr. Lovato, I'm sorry, one, one more thing. The applicant in this case is actually the state. It's not Verizon Wireless, isn't it? Isn't Verizon Wireless going to be one of the lessees? Isn't it State, Sun State Towers?
Hearing Officer, you're correct. There's a partnership between the three, I believe, the two.
Okay, but isn't it Sun State Towers that is the legal applicant for this purposes of this? I, I couldn't find the way it was presented by Pinnacle. It wasn't clear. Maybe I'll ask, I'll just ask.
Hearing Officer, I do believe Pinnacle will answer that question. And they are referencing that they are the applicant on this.
All right, thank you. At this time, would the applicant come forward on the application?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name's Craig Morgan. I do. Sure, 1529 West Laurel Greens, Phoenix, Arizona. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Great. Madam Chair, my name's Craig Morgan. I'm here speaking on behalf of Pinnacle Consulting, the applicant. I'm not here to offer any legal advice or give any legal opinions. I'm joined by David Kluchanek, who will explain to you how Pinnacle determined that this place is really the only feasible place to put this particular facility. And also on the line is Steve Kennedy, who's going to explain to you who, why this facility is necessary to close a significant network communication gap in the area. As we heard from the commission representative or the county's representative, Pinnacle's application has met all applicable Santa Fe Sustainable Land Development Code requirements, such that approval of the applications with conditions would be appropriate. Simply stated, this area desperately needs this service for safety, for health, and for simple communication. Without this facility, Pinnacle and the people it serves, they're going to be, they're going to be effectively prohibited from providing quality wireless service in the area. And that will only harm the residents of Santa Fe County and those who travel through there. At the end of the day, we believe there are no valid bases under the code or federal law to deny the application. And I'll remind you, Madam Chair, that under federal law, you're prohibited from basing any decision, even pretextually, on any sort of supposed environmental RF effects if the facility is going to comply with all FCC requirements. And as the application clearly states, that will be the case. Given all this, we do ask that you approve Pinnacle's application. And with your indulgence, I'd like to have Mr. Kennedy, who's on the line from Hawaii right now, because I think he's on vacation, but he's been patiently waiting to speak, explain to you why it's necessary to have this facility at this location in order to address some significant coverage gaps.
Mr. Morgan, before we hear from Mr. Kennedy, I just want to clear this up. Is Pinnacle Consulting, Inc., the lessee on this piece of property?
The lessee?
Yes, who is the lessee? I'm trying to establish the ownership here.
Ramona and Sandra Gallardo own the property.
They own the property.
Correct.
I understand that.
And the lessee would be Sun State? A company called Sun State. Pinnacle Consulting is appearing on behalf of Sun State.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
And is Sun State Incorporated? Is it LLC?
I don't know. I don't know. I believe, I believe it's an LLC, but I don't know for sure.
Would you supplement the record so that we will have?
I'll find out while I'm sitting. I'll find out when I come back up, I'll gladly supplement the record to make it clear.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you. So again, with your indulgence, I'd like Mr. Kennedy to speak. And then if it's okay with you, I'd also like to have my colleague behind me explain how we chose the site and why it's the only feasible site, if that's all right with you, of course.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'll turn Mr. Kennedy's online, I think it says SK. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Examiner.
Yes, would you please swear you're in? Sure, Mr. Kennedy, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give us the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And would you state your name and address for the record?
Stephen Kennedy, 18756 West Luke Avenue, Litchfield Park, Arizona, 85340. Good afternoon, Madam Examiner. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please go on.
So there should be, there should be a deck called an RF justification that was shared as part of the application. If you could pop that up on the screen, I can talk to that real quick. My apologies, I don't have a copy.
It's attached as Exhibit J to the application. And it's about seven pages in and it looks like this. It says RF design analysis. All right, Mr. Kennedy?
I, yes, I did not, I didn't copy out Exhibit J. Is this going to be engineering? This might be the reason I didn't copy.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, that's the engineering.
All right, well, go forward and I can go back and look at this.
Okay, I'm seeing the letter. Okay, I'm seeing the letter.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
You can move forward to the, yes, ma'am. Move forward about six or seven pages in, please, on the screen, where it gets to the RF design.
I'll give this back to you, because I can look at. Just a moment. Three or four pages in, is that what you said?
Yeah, the person on the screen right now, it says ASE. I need it to get to the RF justification, the RF Design Analysis. There it is. Okay, go to the next slide, please. Okay, real quick, I'll try not to glaze eyes over. So my apologies, I don't have a copy, I'm on vacation. So two reasons why wireless carriers build cell sites. One is coverage and one is capacity. Coverage is the ability for the transmitter on the, on the tower to talk to the transmitter receiver on the mobile phone. That's the ability to have a signal, to process that signal, and to not drop a call. That's one reason. That's the reason why this site's being built. The second is capacity. Capacity is basically the throughput of how a site works. An everyday analogy is if you take a water pipe, you lay a water pipe down the street. One person taps that pipe, they get 100% of capacity. Another person taps it, they get 50, each person gets 50%. Two more people tap it, everybody gets 25%. Or more people tap it, everybody gets 12.5%. So a radio channel is a finite resource and limited in capacity. So the more people tapping that water line or that radio carrier or that frequency, the less bandwidth per person there is. That's why carriers build capacity sites. Next slide, please. Objective of new site is to provide reliable in-vehicle service along Highway 14 and Peter Roads and provide coverage in Los Rios. There is no coverage in this area, and 96% of Americans own a cellphone. 57% of Americans rely exclusively on cellphones, and then 84% of 911 calls are made from a cellphone. Next slide. This is the proposed site. We've kind of already talked about that, 120-foot monopole tower. Next slide. Hey, why here? Significant gap in service in the area. The service is horrible in this area. There's this gap in service of over eight miles. So subscribers need coverage where coverage does not exist. The surrounding sites are all a pretty good distance away. Provide in-vehicle coverage, provide coverage to the homes and businesses. And then there's a lot of growth in rural New Mexico, and wireless usage just keeps going up. And all three of the major wireless carriers have poor service in this area. Next slide. This is the proposed site. Next slide. Okay, towers within four miles. There is one tower within four miles. It is an FM transmitter. It's 2.83 miles south-southwest of the site. I can't remember the exact degree. So this site would not provide any service. And in the upper right corner of the slide, you'll see a picture of the tower up on the hill. The towers, it's like one of my old mentors used to tell me when I started in this business 35 years ago, build the towers where the people are, because that's the ones using the service. So this site down to the southwest is too short, and it's too far away from the people we're trying to help. Next slide. Okay, average distance. This is, so once again, Verizon's the anchor tenant. They're going to be the first carrier that's actually on this SunState Tower. So the closest sites are about 6.99 miles. The farthest away site is 16.48 miles. You can see that there's a whole lot of sites around this area, but there's no sites in the area. So that's why the people are not getting very good quality service within the area of Los Rios. Next slide. Okay, this is third-party crowdsourced data. So this is mobiles reporting back what they're seeing in the area. And we can see that along the road, along the highway, we're seeing a whole lot of red. If you look at the red over on the left on the legend, that signal level less than 140 dBm. That's very, very low. The system, the mobile can't even process. The scanner was able to see things, but the mobile can't process data. And it, you know, there's not really good quality calls going on. Next slide. Okay, this is another third-party crowdsourced data. A little harder to read, but you can find red and orange and dark, dark red dots plotted all over the place. These are mobiles attempting to make connection to the network, and some of them may get it. But it's, it's a very low quality, and it's not the levels of service that we need to provide indoor service reliably or in-vehicle service, much less outdoor service. Next slide. This is another third-party crowdsourced data. These are where mobiles, end-user mobiles are reporting, just like the other two. And there's not a lot of reports going on in the area. So the lack of, lack of point reports showing up, red or green or whatever, really means there's no service of anywhere to speak at for subscribers on this. Next slide. Okay, this is to show you what the closest sites for AT&amp;T is. So you can see that, you know, even though Verizon's the anchor tenant, the other guys are going to want to join, join on too. And the closest one is once again 6.99 miles away. The farthest one for AT&amp;T is 12.36 miles away. So I think Verizon, over time, is going to be interested in placing their antennas on this tower as well. Next slide. Okay, this is AT&amp;T, what, what mobiles are reporting in the area. And once again, they're kind of reporting the same thing that the Verizon mobiles are reporting. There's, there's not much there. Next slide. Next, this is UCLAS. So this is the same thing, AT&amp;T. Their, their mobiles are reporting very little data, actually less, less than what Verizon mobiles are reporting. Next slide. And this is T-Mobile. Once again, closest is 6.99. Notice how they all look kind of the same along the highway up there. You know, the carriers are, all the carriers are located on the same towers, which is why what I would say was going to happen in this area as well with this proposed site is all three of the carriers are going to attach. Next slide. Once again, T-Mobile data. And in fact, up around Los Rios, we start to see where there's no, there's no data being reported because the, the system isn't able to even translate any frequency from the system. Next slide. And then that's UCLAS data for T-Mobile. Next slide. So once again, a bunch of red, and then no reports for anything on open signal. Next slide. So this is the, instead of thinking this is somebody just threw a bunch of colors, there's some, some method to my madness here. So green means to a 95% probability, reliable indoor service for subscribers in the area. And we can see those four sites up along that, that major highway up to the north. They've got pretty decent service all the way across. We even got a site to the east. But looking down around where the proposed is in the blue circle, there's some yellow for in-vehicle, there's some red for outdoor, but there's not much else, right? So we're, we're not seeing any kind of propagation within the area. So this is what we need to be able to show. This is a mathematical model that shows what kind of coverage that a site creates. So we can see that there's no RF services of any sort within the area around, especially to the north-northeast. To the, to the south-southwest, there is, but to north-northeast, it's, it's lacking. So if we go to the next slide, we can see what the proposed site would provide. Okay, so because of the limit in height based upon code, we don't get as much out of this site as we'd like to get, but this is what we need to, to provide service in the level areas. So we're, we're giving more people indoor service and people actually to the northeast and to the, to the east. We're actually giving them service, period, because they don't have it right now. So we're providing a greater amount of indoor, in-vehicle, and open field or outdoor coverage to the south or all around the site, but especially to the south where there are other sites being built that's going to help bridge the coverage along that highway. Next slide. Okay, this one looks like somebody threw up a bunch of colors. But this is basically showing that if you look inside the blue circle and you look where the proposed is, the colors show that there's not really any one dominant color. There's not one specific cover, color covering that area. That means that all those surrounding sectors are sending energy into the area, and it's low levels of energy, but they're all competing with each other, and it's kind of making the mobiles go a little bit crazy because they can't lock on to one single solitary good server. So if you look at up on the highway, you'll see, you know, good transition between each color or each sector of antennas. But down in the area where the proposed is, it's just, it's a mess, right? It's just a bunch of different colors showing up. We go to the next slide, we'll show a dominant server. So now, the proposed, red, light blue, and that green color, greenish-brown color, that's, that's what this new site would, would provide service. So it goes from not getting any dominant server, dominant site in the area to, to where we have one. Next slide. Okay, I zoomed in. This is existing coverage for the area around Los Rios. Go to the next slide. And I zoomed in to show what the proposed site would provide for the residents and the businesses of Los Rios. Next slide. Okay, so this is, there's two type, radio waves are basically, there's two types of energy radio waves. This is my kind of slight explanation on RF safety. So there's ionizing energy and non-ionizing energy. Ionizing energy is what can pass through your body that can actually change your DNA, and that's actually photons passing through your body. Gamma rays and X-rays are an example. So let's say you go to the dentist. What do they do? You got to go get X-rays. You got to go sit in that chair. They put a lead overcoat on you. They jam that thing, the lightning thing in your mouth, makes your mouth hurt. And then you, the person walks out of the room, they hit a button, you hear a beep, right? That's, that's X-rays. They're trying to limit the amount of energy you're getting because photons are passing through your body. It's a protection. Non-ionizing are what wireless phones are. Other examples are car radios, Wi-Fi at your house, light bulbs, baby monitors, TV remotes. That's non-ionizing. The only side effect is heat. If you've ever had a, used a cellphone and stayed on the phone for a long time talking, you notice that the phone gets warm. That's because two things are being generated by that amplifier. One is the RF signal that talks to the cell site, and the other is heat. That's the side effect of non-ionizing. Much like, you know, a light bulb pops in your room, you go quickly go to try and change it out. It's hot. That's because that light bulb was generating light and heat. So that's non-ionizing. Next slide. The FCC has created the limits for all licensed wireless carriers, no matter who they are, if it's sheriff, or it's the fire department, or it's private. They all have to follow the same rules and regulations. So there's two groups. There's occupational and there's general public. Occupational is when you're in an area close to the antennas, that you're like, let's say, working on a rooftop. Those are controlled areas. Those have special rules that carriers follow. Then the, and the, the limits by which the FCC came up was, was based on years and years and years of study is 1.6 watts per kilogram. Now, they reduced that by a factor of 10, and that's the value that they, they assign to occupational. They reduced it by a factor of 50, and that's general public. General public means you don't know you're next to wireless antennas, and you're just walking along the street, having a good day, and you don't know you walked by a site, you didn't pay attention. So we have to have extra safety in place, and that's that 50, 50-time reduction in the specific absorption rate. So those are the two types of licensed limits that the FCC provides. Next slide. Okay, so power levels below a tower. If you go up and you get on a man basket and you put yourself up on the man basket right next to the antenna, you're getting the full power of that antenna right in your head. But if you move down onto the ground and you're outside of the compound area, you're getting 1/1,000 of the power as compared. So this is what the RF safety levels are. It's, it's proximity-based. The closer you are to your phone, if you have it next to your ear, you're getting 50% of the general public limit. If you move it out away from your ear and you double the distance, you're reducing that by the square. So every time you double your distance, you reduce it. So the amount of, amount of energy receiving off the tower that's part of the RF safety is very, very small. Next slide. I did an alternate height analysis based on code. I was showing a site, the height that was 10 feet lower. We go to the next slide. So when I ran the propagation, I told the model to do extra work and look in a specific geographic area and tell me what it sees. So it did extra math. Next slide. So when I did that, I did the proposed versus a height lowering of 10 feet. And by lowering the height 10 feet, we do approximately, approximately an 18% reduction in service as compared to what the proposed is. Like I said, we're limited to 120 based on code. I would like it to be higher, or I would recommend to the RF engineer at Verizon for it to be higher, but it's, the chances for that are, are limited. So we've got to go. Okay, so that's, go to the next slide. And that's the conclusion. So I'd recommend that you please approve the height and approve the site because this area needs it incredibly. So I stand for questions, but I'm walking to the boat.
You need my airbags.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy, are you there? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Cisneros, is he still on the line?
He's still on the line. I'm not sure if he lost connection, though, but he was still on, he is still on the line.
I just wanted to clarify that he was still talking about the 120 feet.
Mr. Kennedy, can you unmute yourself? Are you able to, to answer this question?
Mr. Morgan can maybe answer.
Two things. One, yes, he was talking about the 120 feet proposed. And second, SunState is a limited liability company.
Okay, thank you very much.
And with that, with your indulgence, I'd like to have my colleague come up and explain why this site is the only feasible site in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Morgan, you, you can have these back. If I need to look at them, I'll look at them online. And David, would you raise your right hand?
Thank you.
You swear or affirm your testimony as the truth?
I do. David Kluchnick? Pinnacle Consulting, 17755 North 89th Drive, Peoria, Arizona.
Would you spell your last name?
K-L-U, C is in cat, Z is in zebra, N-I-K. You're welcome. Yeah, so just to reiterate what Mr. Morgan said. The reason for this, you know, we're all going, always going to analyze the area for need improvement based on terrain, customer needs, and modeling results, as you saw from Mr. Kennedy. We love, we look for interested property owners in the area that are in the need, that are in the need for coverage. Based on feasibility, the property owner's participation, terrain, and coverage desired and needs, as well as the Santa Fe County Code. That's why this location was just chosen to be least obtrusive to the residents of Rios, while of course, providing the necessary coverage for emergency needs and the community itself.
Mr. Kl, I'm having trouble with your name.
It's okay.
Are you aware that there is another Sun Tower, proposed tower that's down, I think, south of this location?
There is. I don't remember, it's either the one in Golden, I believe, is the one you're talking about. Yes, ma'am, I do. Yep.
That's so far away, it doesn't really affect it.
Yeah, I mean, as you saw on like the coverage maps that Mr. Kennedy showed, I mean, even the ones that are remotely close, you know, you saw the gaps in coverage with them being six miles away, let alone, you know, the distance down the NM14. It's a major priority. You saw those propagation maps where there was coverage along the highways to the north, but there is no coverage along the NM14. I mean, there's really lacking in coverage, and Verizon has identified it. And we're really looking to help, you know, cover the necessary customers as well as emergency services in the area.
So the, the service for areas around Madrid and Rios, all of that would be improved by the station?
I can't necessarily speak to the, to the rest of the different projects, right? But of course, you know, you saw on the maps where the town of Rios and the communities around, you know, that immediate area will be impacted by the increase in coverage. But at the same time, those other projects, you know, will help increase the coverage where Verizon has identified the needs around those communities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, Madam Hearing Officer, I think what we've heard here is that, at the end of the day, there's really nowhere else to put this tower, at least nowhere feasible. And we know that people around the area would love for it to go somewhere else. They even have suggestions. But the problem is, is they're just not feasible. This is the only place in the area where this tower can be located. And as you can see from Mr. Kennedy's presentation, it is in desperate need of this service. And at the end of the day, the application is complete. Mr. Lovato made it clear, it meets all applicable requirements of code, and it will minimize the visual impact on adjacent properties and maintain consistency with the character of the surrounding area. And there's no basis we're aware of, based on the presentation today, under the code or federal law, particularly in light of the conditions and stipulations that Mr. Lovato has recommended, there's no reason to deny the application. has recommended, there's no reason to deny the application. So we'd ask that you please, because there's no clear alternative, and it's so desperately needed, recommend approval. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, are there, is this, this, I think I saw in some of this exhibits that this particular leased space is near the, um, state highway installation on that side of the highway? Is it in somewhat proximity to that, within a mile or half mile?
I don't know the exact distance, but I think that's correct.
No, you're talking about?
I, I think so.
And are there, are there, um, high-power, uh, electric lines?
I believe in the area, there are high-power electric lines, overhead in the area, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Are, is anyone else wanting to speak on this application? Yes, would if you'd come forward, please?
Yes, I do. My name is Maggie McCauley. I live at 140 Camino Carencia. That is the road for the proposed site. And before I even start, I'd just like to take issue with a couple of things that Mr. Kennedy said. Um, the reason companies build cell towers is for a profit. It is not an act of kindness. Oh, thank you very much. And that they build the site where people are. Yes, there is a need, and I'll get into that, but a great portion of the coverage of this covers areas that are uninhabited. The site as the only feasible one, I'll mention something about that later, but I'm just gonna call that. In talking to Mr. Kluznick, he was open to other sites. There have been other sites proposed by other companies wanting to come into the area. So it's not a matter of feasibility, I think it's a matter of money for infrastructure. So the decision for this conditional use permit will impact our community for decades. It will set a precedent for further development along Highway 14. The village of Surius deserves cell coverage. We all deserve the safety of knowing that if something happens, we can reach help. We have older folks in our area who need that, I am one of them. That said, this location is unfitting for a number of very big reasons, and I don't think we can let our frustration about cell service lead us to believe that this is an either-or decision, that we have to put this cell tower in this location, or we don't get cell service. Instead, I think that the decision is, is this the right location? Does it benefit everyone possible? And does it abide by the designation of the turquoise trail as a national scenic byway? No, it, it does not. There is nothing unobtrusive about a 12-story cell tower in this location, no matter what color they paint it. It is a convenient choice for the developer because it saves them money on infrastructure. Verizon is a company that raked in $17.5 billion last year alone. It is more than fair to ask the developer to give that extra effort to find a more suitable, less visible location, especially in the sensitive, beautiful, iconic area that we live in. They're gonna be profiting from this tower for many, many years to come. There will be multiple providers besides Verizon with devices on this tower. Each provider is additional profit for them, and each device makes the tower more visible for us. Residents have reached out to Pinnacle to discuss more discreet locations on their own properties. Because of the distance from Highway 14, it would entail more expense for the developer. Those people who have offered have not been called back. Profit and the convenience of the developer should not rule the decision here. 25 years ago, the turquoise trail was designated as a national scenic byway. This took a tremendous amount of effort on the part of people, residents who really value the scenic beauty of our area, the archaeological, historical, and cultural qualities. That designation benefits us. It benefits the businesses in our area, there's advertising for businesses. If you simply Google the turquoise trail or national scenic byways, there are so many references. A cell tower that is visible from the Surius Hills State Park, it's visible at the entrance to Surius itself, and to anyone traveling south, or anyone stopping at any of the scenic pullouts to take photos, it counteracts that designation. The bottom line is, this location is simply not fitting. And I just want to mention that Camino Carencia, the word Carencia, uh, means a peaceful place. It means a refuge, it means a home, and that is what our neighborhood is to us. And a cell tower would remove the Carencia from our neighborhood. Many who live on our road, some who have been there since the seventies, will have mixed or no cell coverage. I know people want cell coverage. I don't have cell coverage. We use Wi-Fi calling, and I know tar, people are very, very tired of being without it. But once that tower is in, it is in, and it is in our face. All of our scenic vistas will change. So my request is that you please ask the developer to find a more inconspicuous location that honors the designation of Highway 14 as a national scenic byway, that it is not merely feet off of a private road. We maintain this road at our own expense and our own efforts. There has been no offer to do any road improvement. What the developer will say is, we're gonna breeze in, we're gonna build this, and then you will not see us again. But what they have done is leave behind something that they're gonna profit from every day, and that we're gonna see every single day. That is not reciprocity. There is no reciprocity there. So, another location that, that would not be visible to those entering and exiting the village of Surius. So let's not let our desire for cell coverage blind us to knowing that there are other better locations. It may just cost a little bit more. We can have cell coverage and maintain our iconic landscapes with just a bit more effort. It is the right thing to do. I have statements here from other folks who oppose the location, who agree that cell service is needed, but not at this location. I'd like to enter them into the record, I, I'm happy to read them if you want to hear them.
No, let's, considering the time, let's, I will read them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this application? Yes.
Cynthia Frederick, yes, I do swear. Yes, thank you. Cynthia Frederick, I live at 65 Vicksville Road in Surius, 87010. Trying to be brief, I had submitted an email to Maggie, or to, um, one of the commissioners, who I understand has been replaced, and now I believe you have it. I can read how it starts, expressing my support for the proposed cell tower near Surius at the current proposed location. And if you already have it, I won't bore you with reading it, but it addresses.
Hearing Officer, Hearing Officer, I do have a stack of, um, opposition letters that didn't make it into the packet.
Could you put those up?
And I will put them into record and hand them out for everyone.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well anyway, in brief, um, I've lived in Surius, actually almost in the village, like a half mile out of it, for five years. And in those five years, we've had, this is the third proposed tower that I'm aware of, and I know that there were other efforts previous to us moving there, so this isn't the first try. As far as aesthetics are concerned, no cell tower is beautiful, but the only way to conceal one is to hide it behind other things, and that works in places like New York and Los Angeles, it's not gonna work in a place where there are no tall buildings. It's gonna be, be seen by someone, no matter where you put it. If you put it behind a hill, then it's not going to work. By Verizon and Pinnacle stating that this is the location where it needs to work, their engineers have taken into account all of the various factors about height and blockage of signal, that we as civilians who don't understand engineering would simply question, why can't you put it somewhere else, where if they could, they would. In order to make it function, it needs to go in a place where the signal is going to carry in an appropriate fashion. So in brief, uh, Surius Hills area, which is named for the little hills that surround it, it's hilly terrain. There's not a whole lot of places for the engineers to select. The fact that they've identified this as one that would serve a very large number of local users while inconveni, inconveniencing very few, and to find a landowner willing to host the tower is an opportunity we can't allow to slip away. I've visited the site, and it is mostly only in line of sight with, I think, I'm not, I think you called it the highway. I think of it as the Department of Transportation. It's a big supply yard, there's high-power power lines there, and the proposed tower is going to go kind of to the southeast of that. The village is on entirely the other side of the highway. Um, so from the highway, you're gonna see the Department of Transportation, you're gonna see a hill, and then the tower behind that hill. So that particular scenic vista is already not particularly scenic. I have complete sympathy for the, the homeowners who live around it, but in comparison, the village has, I've got 50 signatures of people who need cellphone service in their homes. They have no signal right now. There's a lot of people who can afford to pay for the Wi-Fi or other additional personal services that gives them cellphone signal in their homes. But there are a lot of residents living in Surius who are below the poverty line, who rely on the food donations and other free services just to exist. And they have a cellphone because that's their only connection with their support services, their medical services, transportation. They need to call the blue bus to get them to Santa Fe to do whatever they need to do. If they can't afford the extra, I think we pay between 60 and 100 bucks for Wi-Fi, just to be able to use the cellphone in their house, um, we have that system built into our house, and our phone signal carries about 10 to 20 feet outside of our home. If I am at the foot of our driveway, if I'm at the corral with my horse, I have no cell signal. It's only if I'm in my house that I can use my cellphone. And that's pretty much what everybody there is sentenced to, is, it's a dead zone. You drive through it, the tourists, who we all wanna cater to because it's a scenic byway, the tourists have no phone signal. If they get in a wreck, they have no resources, and they don't know the area, they don't know the neighborhood, they don't know where to walk to find that elusive cell service. So it's not just for the village of Surius, it's for everyone else who uses that highway to get from point A to point B. Traffic on the highway has increased just in the five years that we've been there, tremendously. Um, there are, I don't know if people are using it to bypass Highway 25, or what, but the traffic has increased. There's no turning that clock back. And then as far as developing the area, because now there's cell signal, we still have zoning rules. We are still zoned, rural residential, you can't subdivide beneath, beneath a certain plot size, you can't bring in just any old business because you want to. There's not gonna be a strip mall at the entrance to the village, at least I don't see how that would happen. So in a nutshell, I would like you to consider the needs of the low-income residents who need phone service. They manage to pay for a cellphone because they have to have it, but they should be able to use it as well. Um, this tower's gonna improve many lives in the community, um, and this is far past time. If we keep waiting and waiting and waiting for the best possible solution that makes everyone happy, we'll be waiting a really long time. So, I'm done with that. I have the, um, petition, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Anyone else who wants to speak on this?
My name is Dennis Overman. Um, I live at 56 Camino Carencia. This proposed site is at like 48 Camino Carencia, so I'm not too far away from where they're gonna build this thing. it strikes me that, uh, the people that selected this site drove down my road and said, oh, this is cool, this is easy, right here, it's all flat and beautiful, and it is, it's one of the prettiest little spots on that road. It's a little valley, nothing else around, it's just gorgeous, you know? And they wanna put a 40-foot, a 120-foot tower right in the middle of it, and, uh, I've been an artist and a musician all my life, and aesthetically, it just, I find that really offensive. It's like they're flipping the bird, they don't, you know what the, the deal is, and this guy before, before me kept saying, there's no alternative, there, this was the only place. And I, I called BS on that. My BS meter went redline, because I know that road, and I've been up and down it, and all the way out to the end. I have friends that live all the way out to the end of that road, and there are, there are sites that these people have not looked at. I don't think they're being very patient. I think they're going for the expedience of the economy of the whole thing, you know? They want, they want the biggest bang for the less, the least amount of money, and so, um, yeah, that's what we, we used to call, I was, I was a tree planter, and back in the day, and, uh, we used to call that gravy cruising, you know? The guy come along with, and he would plant 50 trees in the easiest spot, and that's what they're doing. They're looking for the easiest spot, and the most bang for their money, and, uh, anyway, I'm gonna keep it short because we've been listening to, I've been sitting here listening, um, the testimony from various cases, uh, since 3 o'clock, and I'm a little worn out, but I wanna thank you all, I wanna consider, want you to please consider, um, looking around, I mean, okay, come back to the neighborhood, interviews, come to my house, I mean, I'm right down the road, I'm at 56, and I can take, I can show you places that you, you walked right past, that would be wonderful. Um, you, you know, the highway department is already an industrial area, it looks, it looks industrial to me. Anyway, the, um, um, actually, I fought that too, back when, I've been there a long time, back when, uh, the highway department, um, petitioned to build their depot there, we fought it. We had Liz Stefanics, we had even govern, we had Richardson, government, Governor Richardson saying, saying, oh yeah, he loves this area. So anyway, we've, we've been there and done that, and, um, there are, there are better ways, and I, I don't begrudge anybody their right to have cell service, that's, that's, you know, that genie's out of the bottle, and, um, we're gonna have to live with that, but we don't have to live with it, flipping us the bird every night. But we don't have to live with it, flipping us the bird every night we drive home, and there's this big old tower there, 120 feet. My God, that's, that's 12 stories high. It's like, I won't make the comparison, I was just going to, because this is a, I'm trying to be respectful. I love this building, and I love what the county does. Thank you for listening. I'll get out of your way now.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Overman.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to comment? Don't be shy.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thanks for your time, and thanks, everybody, for staying late. I know we've been here a while. Public speaking's never been my thing. I spoke with Mr. Lovato, and he gave me the stipulations, Madam Chair, and said, stick to the facts. Sam Roberts, 2912 Highway 14, Madrid, New Mexico. My job is I raise cattle for a living, so I'm kind of a socialist at heart, because if it wasn't for me, my cows wouldn't eat. So in light of that, I'm not left, I'm not right, I'm for doing the right thing. Just for the record here, I want to go and give this to Mr. Cisneros. This is a letter from the Simonis, who live at 25 Main Street in Surrius. He's a former veteran, recent amputee. They need services, they need cellphones, and I think it would benefit the community more than be a detriment, just because we have an aging population there, as we all know. I'm going to throw out some facts here. I want everybody to know that currently 16.5% of our GDP with the United States is medical. By 2035, that's going to move to 26%, because we are going to start having more deaths than births because of our baby boomer population going away and the aging population increasing and not having an increase of young people. Our primary driver of population growth will be strictly from immigration. So however that changes in the next 10 years, you're going to be a huge systemic change in Washington, and I think you're seeing the driving forces of that. A lot of people that are in opposition, and I met Mr. Kluznik and his team, which I'm gracious that they're here, at the first meeting at the Surrius Hills informal brouhaha, I'd like to say, it was basically like a bunch of cattle yelling at each other because there wasn't enough money or food going around. But there was a lot of people speaking there who are not residents, but I just want to go ahead and speak out and just read my letter, and I'll be done. I'm in strong support of permit number 255050, and I'd like to, to expose hypocrisy and misinformation that is being thrown out there by the Madrid Landowners Association. I'm voicing my strong support for the approval concerning the construction of the Verizon Telecommunications Tower that would serve a vital role in improving cellular reception in the Surrius Hills region. I wish to formally denounce the opposition coming from the Madrid Landowners Association and others in Madrid, New Mexico, who are once again grandstanding against critical infrastructure that would benefit the public, particularly the elderly, medically vulnerable, and residents in the rural areas. This is not the first time that the individuals from Madrid have obstructed efforts by AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and others to improve telecommunications services, yet they themselves, they themselves have publicly admitted in a secretary's note on their own website, according to their Meetings Act governed by state statute, that says that poor internet and unreliable power directly interfered with their ability to conduct annual meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. The note states, and I quote, "Internet access in or near Madrid was notoriously unreliable, with data transfer speeds and available bandwidth seldom sufficient for a virtual meeting. Power failures were common, which would have disrupted any virtual meeting. Signed, Rebecca Nafe, President, Madrid Landowners Association." This is a clear admission that lack of reliability infrastructure hurt their own operation, and yet a lot of people now oppose the solution, a tower that would improve both cellular and internet access. Meanwhile, they continue to collect HOA dues while misinforming their community about the purposeful benefit of the proposed towers. At the recent meeting I was just at, they went so far as to say if they're even operating as a legal business entity. And I've seen the records on Secretary's State, they're not operating as a legal entity, yet they inform their people that they're doing the right thing. Their actions are hypocritical and self-serving. Their opposition, their opposition jeopardizes the safety and well-being of residents who depend on stable communication from emergency alerts, medical devices, and day-to-day life. It is imperative that the city not allow misinformation and obstructionist tactics to derail a project that serves a greater good. I strongly urge you to approve the permit 255050, stand up for public safety, improved infrastructure, and the needs of those who rely on modern communication systems to live life safe and connected lives." Thank you for your time in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Would you want to speak on?
Hi. Yes, I do. I'm Joanna Conti, number 6 Anthracite Avenue, Surrius, New Mexico. Hi. Thank you for your time and allowing me to voice my concerns. I am a land, home, and studio owner, along with my mother, Tina Dordon, and my family. Our land is right next to the proposed spot, a quarter mile from this site for erecting an out-of-state company 120-foot cell tower in the Surrius Valley. We ask you to choose another location. Listen to our concerns. This is a residential area. Please find another location that is not such densely populated residential area. I've been here on this spot for 20 years. Like many others in our neighborhood, this is my livelihood, my home and my love. 120-foot cell tower is an eyesore on the national scenic byway. It disrupts the aesthetics of our historic environmental integrity of our valley. There are other spots that have been proposed, other locations that have more land around it and fewer people's homes to place a cell tower on. I hear about the safety, but really, where is the safety certification that this frequency of the RF radiation isn't going to harm our emotional and physical well-being? So please take preventative action to protect your citizens and choose health. Let's be conscious of the visual environmental footprint and have other solutions other than a large 120-foot scale tower, a different location, a small scale tower. There are already countless studies that this distance that you have from the proposed cell tower location on 48 Camino Carencia to people's homes is less than a quarter mile, even a half mile, still close enough to increase the rates of anxiety, insomnia, dizziness, thyroid function, immune function, the list goes on. They've been proven. We have a daycare there also, right there, a quarter mile from this proposed spot. How will it affect the children's developing neurobiology? I know that you are getting demands of people wanting cell service, and everyone should get services and care, but it will be us that will be blasted right under the tower. It should be a human right to not be able to erect this industrial structure without the property owners around it agreement. We pay state and county taxes, this is our home that we love. I'm just concerned about the health, health and safety of my family, my friends, and being such a close range of cell tower RF frequency. I know that there's a lot of people upset about this proposed cell tower location that can't be present, and there has to be other options away from our neighborhood, away from our historic scenic byway, away from people's bedrooms, away from degrading our real estate, and there has to be a safer place for my neighbors in all direction of this proposed tower spot. There are other solutions. Truly, where is the guarantee, or you actually mentioned that this is the beginning of a multi-tower structure, equipment clusters compounding the visual environmental footprint? And stating before, the RF radiation, the 120 tower is known to be an environmental pollutant that disrupts wildlife habitats and migration. And our valley is home to vultures that migrate, coyotes, birds, tarantula. Yes, let's progress forward and still protect and honor our scenic lands that we are known for here in our state. So about the facts of the negative impact of the people who live so close to the cell tower, Camino Carencia is our neighborhood. 120-foot eyesore will be upsetting to our historic integrity. This directly affects our livelihood. The truth is, we don't really know the impact on our environment, our physical and mental bodies, such a close range. So let's take preventative measures. Please find a new location. This is not the spot. This valley is a sanctuary. Its peace should be preserved on all levels, as stewards of the land and the animals and the spirit of this valley. May everyone thrive and be safe, and great thanks for your time. And I have cellphone service, and I have Verizon, and I am right there.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else want to speak on this application? Mr. Cisneros, is there anyone online? Yes, let's see if there's anyone making comments online first.
Hearing Officer Haber, there's no one online showing that they want to speak on this matter.
Right, thank you. Yes, please, come forward.
Need to be resworded or anything? No? Okay. So just, I mean, we're talking about a lot about the location of the proposed facility and applicable sites of other locations. I mean, please keep in mind, this does require an interested landlord in order to house this facility, right? So we can't just decide to place this facility wherever we want. We do have to have a required participant landlord in order to do that. So different locations, you know, they would require participation of the landlord. This has been in the process for over two years of finding a potential landlord, and this was the one landlord that was interested with the potential location. In reference to the scenic corridor, to my knowledge, this is not a registered scenic corridor, natural bypassway with Santa Fe County. So, I mean, I can be correct if I'm wrong, but nothing via the jurisdiction has stated that for me. And then, of course, you know, just to kind of keep in mind, we understand that we can't necessarily make, you know, everybody happy with the identified location, but it has been identified the need for the erroneous coverage in the area, and that's what we're really looking to do, is take care of that for the community and the NM14, as well as we saw in the propagation maps, the, the coverage being proposed, and it was, you know, said that it was going to be more incumbent for the uninhabited to areas of the community. But in reality, we are not only doing the town, which is to the north of the NM14, but there is a small residential community just off the NM14 to the south, which are also being covered. It is the small and few and far in-between homes, you know, that are further down Camino that are not, you know, getting the full necessarily data coverage, but will still be getting coverage based on what's currently there. But we are, of course, attacking the rest of the town and community of where we're really, really looking to go.
Thank you. Yes, did you want to make a brief comment?
Other residents have come forward with other sites, and they were never contacted. They left messages, they spoke with Mr. Kluznik, and they were not contacted. These are people who live farther down our road. It would mean more expense for the developer because they would have to dig deeper trenches or longer trenches and lay more cable, but they would be more discreet locations from the one that they're proposing. Also, the, you know, we've said that three other companies, or this is the third proposal for cell coverage in our area, none of those proposals were for any site on Camino Carencia. So there are other choices. Other carriers have chosen other locations. And so to say that this is the only location, only feasible location, is just not true. It's the chosen location because it's convenient and it's less expensive. The previous landowner, the landowner who owned that property, property before the current landowners, had been approached about a cell tower. She said no. She had a long history in our area, she lived in our area. The people who own the land now inherited that property from her. They don't live here. They will not see it. They have no investment, other than they will get a check for leasing that property. Another neighbor has suggested another site on her own property that I think is farther north, if I'm not mistaken, and it would be a little more blocked than that. So there are alternatives. There are alternatives so that people have the safety of having cell coverage, and yet it doesn't destroy the intrinsic nat, just natural beauty that we have, that we call it home. That's our home. Thank you.
I understand, thank you. Are there any other comments to this application? I will prepare a recommended order in 15, within 15 business days, and thank you all for your attendance, participation. And now we'll get to the final case, which is case 255100. Bruce and Deborah McAllister, conditional use permit.
Dominic J. Cisneros, Building and Development Supervisor. Bruce and Debbie McAllister, applicant and property owners, request approval of a CUP to allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit. The 1.787-acre site is zoned residential community within the Community Overlay District of Tuskegee. The site is located at 1473 Bishop's Lodge Road, Commission District 1. The applicant is proposing to build an accessory dwelling unit with an attached garage and workshop. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for an ADU. The proposed ADU will have an attached two-car garage and workshop. The proposed roof square footage of the structure would be approximately 1,183 square feet. Of the total 1,183 square feet, 456 square feet would be heated space for the ADU. The use of the structure will be for when family and friends visit over holidays, to allow these guests to have their own personal space. The proposed attached garage and workshop will be for personal use. The subject property is zoned residential community within the Community Overlay District of Tuskegee, Chapter 9, Section 9.5. This zoning allows for an accessory dwelling unit as a conditional use through the zoning district. The applicant states, the only existing structures on the property are the main residence, a child playhouse, and a pergola that is attached to, to the home. Access will be off of Bishop's Lodge Road. Staff would like to note that there is an existing accessory structure slash storage shed on the property in the proximity of the proposed accessory dwelling that will be The primary dwelling unit is indicated on the assessor's website as 1,556 heated square Building and Development Services staff has reviewed this project for compliance with pertinent SLDC requirements and has found that the facts presented support their request for a conditional use permit to allow an ADU. The use is compatible with the current development within the affected zoning districts. The use will not impact adjacent land uses, and the application satisfies the submittal requirements set forth in SLDC inclusive, inclusive of the conditional use criteria set forth in Chapter 4, Section 4.9.6.5. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the request for a CUP to allow the use of an accessory dwelling unit. If the hearing officer finds the CUP criteria has been met and recommends approval of the CUP, staff recommends the following conditions be imposed. Madam Hearing Officer, may I enter these conditions into the record?
Yes, please.
This report and the exhibits listed below are hereby submitted as part of the hearing record. Staff requests the hearing officer memorialize findings of fact and conclusion of law in a written recommended order. Santa Fe County Planning Commission may be holding a public hearing on this matter on June 18, 2025. Madam Hearing Officer, I stand for any questions.
Mr. Cisneros, I reviewed all of the exhibits and your, as well as your reports. I, I really don't have any questions, but I, apparently, the proposed ADU- I, I really don't have any questions, but I, apparently, the proposed ADU would meet all the requirements under the accessory dwelling units under Chapter 10. Is that correct?
That is correct, Hearing Officer Abear. The ADU will be sharing the utilities with the primary residence, sharing the driveway with the primary residence, and it does meet the standards of the square footage, that is less than 50% of the heated square footage of the primary residence.
Is, is it, I read through the, the Tuskegee overlay, and otherwise, the property, it seems, would be entitled to an ADU, except for this is the way that overlay works. Is that correct?
That is correct. I believe there are only two overlays. I think Madrid might be the only one. Those two are, are, do allow ADUs, but through a conditional use permit.
Okay, because I was, just couldn't figure out why, why is this being done as a CUP? All right, thank you. I had no other questions.
Thank you.
And I really don't have any questions for the applicants, if they're here. I, I'm sorry that this was the very end of a very long day. But I will prepare a recommended order within 15 business days. Thank you all. And I, I'm sorry, there was anyone, anyone left who wanted to make a comment on this?
Hearing Officer, there is one individual online, but they don't appear to want to speak on this behalf.
All right. Very good. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.